Okay, it's 7:30, uh, 6:35 and we're all board members are present. So I'd like to call the meetings to order.
Yeah.
This is a severe gender divide.
Really, look at that!
Can we flip and mix?
Ahhh! John, we like.
Some of us are...
John, what side are you on?
This is not your side.
I'm on this side. I'm on the, this is the brain trust.
Anyway. Thank you all for coming on Wednesday night. Thank you people who are here observing, our listeners, volunteers, friends. I, just as a reminder, we need a motion to accept the minutes that were passed around. Anyone, please? Any, we've all made comments to those, I think, and sent them in to John. A motion to accept the minutes as written?
I make a motion to accept them.
It's passed.
They were masterfully done, John. Masterfully done.
You can say that because he's on your side.
Yeah, right. And the second, accepted by Mitch. Any discussion?
We protect our own over here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Just a reminder that you have any conflict of interest or particular personal actions about subjects, please tell us so you will not be, participate in that discussion. The agenda, you've all seen. The advisory board report will be given by Sandra Oxford. She can't get here until 7:30. We would like to have a little more of an in-depth discussion about programming because it's been a very lively topic on the listserv and I think Kurt has some, we'll kind of get started with that. And we'll put that in later around the time of the advisory board if that's okay with everybody.
Who asked for copies on the internet of Board of Trustees liaison to the community register?
Why don't you just...
Okay. Adam has interim station manager's report, please.
Okay. A good deal to talk about, lots, some money stuff because we are really hitting the end of the year here. I'm probably going to say some things that get repeated by Barb Demarest or Pat Pomeroy or even maybe a little bit in Andrea's volunteer report, starting with Kevin. Hey. Starting with the fact that we made our $50,000 goal for our pledge drive. Took us nine days to do it. Felt like a little long, but at the end it kind of really felt like it all came together. Of that $50,000, forty-one and a half is in the bank. We're waiting on a big check to come in from the web pledges. They all come in at once in one big check. We've sent all the premiums and thank you letters for everything except those web pledges because again, those web pledges that sort of haven't arrived to us yet, but they're going to be here this week, I believe. We, the sound supporters have made their first monthly pledge. We got twenty, forty-two of them this drive, added to about nineteen that we had already. Total of sixty-one sound supporters now. We get about $1,000 a month in sound supporter contributions. We got an update from our PSA book. We have read a total of thirty-four-hundred-and-six PSAs this year so far with fifteen-hundred-and-thirty different events. And here, there's how it stacks up to prior years. We are just a little below average for total reads and we are above average for total events, for whatever that's worth. Again, I'm going to put this, this whole, John has this, this will get attached to the minutes, and I'm also going to put this out on the listserv tomorrow. So all, you can go back and see all these details. The smartphone app, which was launched during our pledge drive, we've had one technical complaint from somebody so far, which is astounding. It's currently installed on forty-eight Android devices and ninety iOS devices. We had to double our web stream capability to, to deal with the demand for the increased streaming traffic.
That's what I have.
Yeah. Now you won't, for a little while, anyway.
That's cool.
You just let me know when you have that problem again and we'll...
Oh, that's cool.
So it's, you know, it costs us a little more money to, to host more streams, but it's a pretty small amount of money and I think it's just great that people are able to...
So, I need a second app on that now. So, what I want an app for now is so that when I'm going down the Wartsboro mountain and I'm driving, I want an app that will automatically turn on my cellphone to turn on the app.
Oh, I said like, oh, interesting. Put it in like a location awareness.
Location awareness app so I don't have to go into WAMC, but I can continue, because I'll have, I'll have JFF on my radio.
So like it bings whenever you leave the broadcast area?
Right. So then, then I want to have it automatically just turn on to my, my app.
Sure.
Right? Yeah, you do that, right?
That's a little, I think that...
I thought it was called the passenger in the backseat app.
For single people, I guess.
The next update we're hoping to do with the app is going to hook up with our online Google Calendar that tells you what's on the air when you're listening. So when you start the app and Ramble Tamble is playing, it will say, "You're listening to Ramble Tamble" across the bottom of your screen so you can tell the name of the show. Okay, next page. We sent out seven-hundred-and-thirty-three first-class letters as an end-of-the-year appeal to people who've donated to the station in the last few years. They went out yesterday. We're going to do an email blast early next week with the same appeal, saying maximize your income tax deduction at the end of the year. Help us end the year in the black. Speaking of ending the year in the black, we are $12,000 away from doing that, which is way better than I thought we would be. I'm kind of astounded now. Oh, okay, so we're $12,000 away from that. We're expecting $6,000 to come in with this batch of web pledges that's coming in. So that really kind of puts us $6,000 away from ending the year in the black.
That's $6,000 web pledges that were made during the drive.
Right.
Right. So, so any pledges now that come in on top of that as part of this end-of-year campaign, money we raised during the holiday show this Saturday, that's all going to go towards that. And boy, it's, it's looking kind of possible. We hired an outreach coordinator, Mr. Patrick McCollum, who many of you know, is now managing all aspects of station promotion under my direction. He's in about fifteen hours a week and I'm feeling like the increased attention to the sort of image of the station beyond just what's on the air. What, you know, the, the pictures that people see on Facebook, the posters that they see at the post office. We're looking for higher attendance and events, more listener engagement, maybe make new friends as well, people we don't already have as friends. Okay, so this is a little out of order, but I had a conversation with, and we can certainly talk more about, and I sent you all notes on a conversation that I had with the vice president of radio at the Corporation of Public Broadcasting, the focus of which was, what are your recommendations and what is your guidance on changing programming? And the big piece of guidance was, you need to have a policy in place, not just a statement that says, you know, our programs should follow approximately this mold. It's really the policy says, here's who we, here's what, here's the homework that we do, here's how we identify a shortcoming in programming, here's who we talk to about how to best fill that, here's, you know, all the steps. And what that kind of brought to light for, to me was that we really need policies written down on a lot more things so that we have a very clear process for how we accomplish some of the tasks that we have to accomplish. We have a couple of policy documents. We also have a big folder of documents from ninety-two to two thousand and two, but there seems to be kind of a gap from two thousand and two to two thousand and twelve. And that's not to say those aren't out there. It's going to take some investigating and some organizing to kind of put that all together. But I think that a succinct document with all of the station policies in it that we can easily reference and point to when someone says, gets, you know, challenges us in a decision that we make, having that on the books and having that available to us is going to be a pretty powerful and I think necessary tool. And I think before we go into any of the policy creation, we need to find out if we have a policy on how we make policy, which sort of seems silly, but I think that really it's, really, it's, it's the foundation. It's an important stepping off point. And we may have that already. That may be in that list of policies we have from ninety-two to oh-two. A programming policy is something we seriously need. A collaboration policy is something I'm going to ask for as a result of a conversation we had, which I'll talk about at the end of this report. And who knows what else we need policies on? Like, I got an email from somebody who wanted to get in touch with Jim McKeegan, Lisa Brody's husband, and I replied and I said, "Our policy is to not pass on information about contact informa-" and I realized, you know, do we have, do we have that policy? You know, do we have that written somewhere that says that? You know, the, the breadth of, of written policies that we probably ought to have is pretty extensive. So, want to plant that seed and I think it's an important thing for us to do.
There are also policies that are asked about in the IRS 990 form. Those would certainly be ones that we ought to address as well.
Yeah. I'll keep moving if that's okay with everybody. We have begun the price, process to start the renewal of our broadcast license. We've engaged Garvey Hubert Bear in DC to assist us with this. We've got a great team working on this. Barbara Graff Van Larson and Christine Ahern all met on Saturday to sort of get the ball rolling. We've started making the necessary on-air announcements and announcing our intent to renew our license. This is the time, this is the next, you know, eight months or so is the time when we're most likely to have somebody come to the station and ask to see the public file or somebody submit a complaint to the FCC or rather, submit information to the FCC about why maybe they feel we should not renew our license, our license should not be renewed. This is, this is, this is the time when they would do that.
How long the process is to some sort of...
When is it due?
Oh, off the top of my head, I can't remember. Um, and...
There was a PSA today about that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think February is when it has to go in.
Yep.
And April is the final...
Right.
...decision. So, we actually created a Google Calendar and I think Christine shared it with you.
She did, I couldn't see it.
Yeah, she shared it with me. I haven't looked at it. But that gives us all the dates that we have to hit, all the targets that we have to hit.
So, February, this is February fourteen?
Yeah.
So, okay.
It's quick.
Yeah.
It's quick, but we do have, we have a lawyer who will be doing the actual application.
Yep.
We just have to go through and review everything.
Get our ducks in rows, kind of.
Right.
And after the application is submitted, there's still an opportunity for people to submit contestants, you know. We also just got notice that the application for our two thousand and fourteen Community Service Grant, this is the $90,000 we get every year from CPB, give or take. The amount varies. I've started on that, but we're going to need, I'm going to need help with that and that is the kind of thing that our bookkeeper will help with and hopefully Pat Pomeroy can help with as well.
Oh, he's a volunteer?
Yeah. Oh, Pat Pomeroy!
Yeah, she volunteered.
Yes, yeah. On the front of the Jeffersonville Studio Rebuild, this is, this is an imminent project, but we have a few ducks to line up before we break ground. One of the big ones is location. Are we going to do this in the greenhouse? Are we going to do this in the original building? I remember there was some discussion about who owns what, who leases what to whom. I think we need to kind of settle that out in the not-too-distant future. Me and Sonya came up with a plan to take, take volunteers, anybody who wants to go, on a tour of several other stations to see how their studios are set up.
That's a good idea.
Just to meet other radio people and see how they do things. I talked to WGXE today. They're thrilled. So we'll hit them. They actually have three studios that they, they're in Catskill, Hudson and Acra. No, not Acra.
Anquan.
Eight, eight, it's four letters. It starts with an A.
Accra.
Accra, thank you.
Capital G.
And they, so their, their three studios connect much in the same way that our Honesdale studio connects and they broadcast out of their Hudson. That's what they're, that's linked up to the, that's, yeah. So we'll definitely see the Hudson and the Catskill. They said the Accra one is kind of rough around the edges and not really worth looking at. I thought we'd also go see WSUL and Thunder 102 because, you know, they're commercial, but they're radio stations, just to, just to get our eyes, you know, on a few different things. The holiday show was postponed last Saturday. It was snowy and nasty. This Saturday forecast rainy and warm, so we're excited for a great night. Maureen Neville has been kicking butt. Jill Padgeau has been helping her a lot and we've got lots of volunteers signed on to help. We got enough money in underwriting for the event from small businesses to basically offset all the operating costs. So ticket sales go straight to the bottom line, which is, that's really fun when that happens. And, and Jill and Maureen are really hard workers and very detail-oriented. We're going to do school holiday concerts again this year. We've done it for the last couple of years. We get recordings from all the area schools and we cut out, you know, the highlights, the best parts. Patrick's putting this all together. And this year we're going to, whereas prior years it was sort of just like, you know, that was this band playing this song. Next, we'll hear this next band playing this next song. We're going to kind of make it a little more multimedia, I don't know how to say it, but we're going to do interviews with students and teachers. We've got a nineteen-sixty-eight concert recording that Glenn Woodell was the director for and we're going to interview him about that. And again, Patrick's handling all this. I got it, the ball rolling and he came on board and he's taken it. Volunteer holiday party coming up. Anybody want to offer up their house, please do. We're sort of looking for a venue that is central-ish, big enough. I will leave it cleaner than we found it, I promise. And at the turn of the new year, we're planning to roll out some changes based on the volunteer sort of visioning sessions that we had earlier this year. We're going to change some station logos, some of the ways we identify the station. We're going to talk, change a little bit about the way we read the forecast and what we use as our central point for reading the forecast. We're going to simplify legal ID so it's not so wordy. We're going to create basically a second, the, we're going to create a second listserv for the office and the board and the standing committees to communicate to the volunteers sort of on an official channel. And then the regular listserv as it stands now will just remain in place and it'll give volunteers an opportunity to chat about, just about anything they need to. The, the office listserv is basically going to replace the forum, which turned out to just not really be so hot because people kind of had to go to it to visit it. So if you weren't going there every day, you might have missed some things. So this is going to be an email that pops up in people's mailboxes. It'll have a little header that says, you know, message from the office or whatever it might be. And it's just going to be a way for us to make sure that if people, you know, kind of check out from the listserv, if they don't really feel like participating in those discussions, it means that we can still kind of reach them. We're also going to work up some training checklists so that people who come back into the fold after having been gone for a while have a list of things we can go down to make sure they get all the memos and things that may have changed since they have been in there last. And this is all going to get put onto what I hope to be a really cute little operator license, which is where we'll have a file for every volunteer that says, you know, name, address, contact info, qualifications, you know, special availabilities, anything like that. And that all is going to go on a little card with your fixture on it that you're going to get. It's not going to really mean anything, but I just like the idea of being a card-carrying volunteer. And you don't have to have your card on you to do anything, but I just think it'll, you know, we'll kind of do it, a little vintage... Yeah, sure. Yeah. Get one of those little, you know, they have the little, you know? We'll laminate them. I just, I just...
You have bells.
Yeah.
Photo ID.
Photo ID. Yeah, not that you need it for anything, but maybe you can get beer with it one day.
I can add a triple with that recently.
No.
Is there a policy for that?
Right, yeah, so here we go. Is there a policy for that? Do we need a policy for that? Yeah. I think, I don't know if this is the last thing on my list, but a collaboration was proposed with Bethel Woods. It is the last thing on my list. I met with a couple of board members and a couple of volunteers who have connections to Bethel Woods and who are just good heads in general. And we brainstormed in advance of a meeting with Bethel Woods about what we might like. Now, it, it was pretty much made clear that Bethel Woods kind of has an idea already for what they want. And so they're going to tell us what they want. And, and we've kind of developed a couple of things about maybe what we might want from them. The whole trick here is I just, I'm just cautious. I'm just cautious about a balanced relationship and a relationship that doesn't violate any pay-to-play, any, you know, consideration for changes in programming rules. There's, there's a lot to be wary of as a non-commercial station and I just want to make sure that we don't cross any lines. And I'm afraid that they're, they're just going to want us to come and show up and kind of be like Thunder 102, which we really can't do. So, I'll hear what they have to say and, and we'll, we'll take it from there. I'm looking for a policy on this, though. How do we, you know, what do we do? How do we collaborate with other entities? You know, the fact that they're nonprofit helps a lot. There's other, you know, this also came up for me that I, that there are other, you know, arts organizations that we can collaborate with who are for and/or nonprofit, the Delaware Valley Arts Alliance, Wayne County Arts Alliance, the Silk Mill, the Cooperage, you know, all these organizations that are bringing artists and performing artists and art and, you know, things which deepen and enrich the lives of the people who live in our area that we could collaborate with. So I think that, again, having a policy, having a clear set of instructions for, here's how we interact with other organizations, is, is going to be really helpful and in fact, necessary.
Catskill Arts Society was...
Sure, yep. There's, there's, there's a hundred of them. I mean, there's really no shortage.
We could do envision something in the future where, kind of like the college has a live broadcast of the Metropolitan Opera there, so that we can, don't have to go to New York City to watch the opera. You could just toddle on down to the theater there and watch that. And that's a collaborative...
Yep, it is.
...event. So maybe we could be broadcasting concerts...
One of the trickiest things about being a radio station and being a non-commercial radio station is that you have to, you can't receive any consideration, and that's kind of a big term for anything you play on the air. So if they're giving us money and, or let's just say they're giving us money and they say, "Okay, we're going to give you money and you're going to play this concert on the air," that's, that's it. We can't do it. That's, they've given us consideration and we've given, we've, we've altered what goes on our airwaves for that consideration. The college running the opera is great. They're not a radio station. It's a little, they are, you know, they may be nonprofit, but they're, they're not bound by that rule that we are. So this is, needs to be...
But the Met is interesting because at the meeting I brought up, what's the longest-running program on public radio right now?
Mm-hmm.
And it's the Met.
It's the Met.
And so there's a way to make these things work.
Yeah.
But Adam is absolutely right. And one of the things that we're going to talk about when we talk with Bethel Woods, and full disclosure again, I'm on the board of their museum, is that we have some restrictions that we have to abide by and things that they might not think of that we have to work around. And, so I, but I don't think, you know, my impression so far is, in, you know, kind of having a foot in both camps is, they're just opening to see what we can do.
Yeah. I think there's definitely something.
Yeah, because they did a program, Bethel Woods did a program last year that I thought, or maybe the year before, that I thought was really cool, where they invited students in to, to listen to operas from the Met with some educational components to that. You know, they did the magic flute and they told them about, you know, you know, so they, so they bust kids into that. There, there's no reason to say that just because we're not, we're not in a physical space, we can't do something educational using our airwaves to promote that education of music, whatever, whatever genre we just tried to...
Getting our kids together with theirs to sort of collaborate on something too.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot that can happen.
That's a cool thing.
Yeah.
The other, the other thing is we have done some things, some of our on-air people that are simple, that we can have access to people who do exhibits at the museum and people who are performers who are giving a concert, they will give us as they have done with Kathy Geary. The name of the manager of ex-performer and you can interview that person. If you interview them in the bed of a music show, it's only on air for, it's only on the archives for two weeks. That's not any problem with doing that. If you interview them on Making Waves or some other public...
It can stay indefinitely.
It'll stay indefinitely. The other thing is they have a very big teen program...
Yes, huge.
...that's meeting, and we didn't even know about it. So that, how we might collaborate or our youth program is, is a good idea. The thing too about concerts is, remember when we hear "Performance Today"? It often says, "This was recorded at KWB on AMP Tampa, Florida." And that might be something they would really like to have one, we somehow facilitate their broadcasting. I'm delighted we're doing this. It's the biggest cultural entity in our county. And, and they came to us. I mean, they came to Glenn, so I think it's very promising. It sounds like we can make something out of it.
Yeah. That's all I got.
Okay. Questions?
Can I just make a comment about the, the policies?
Sure.
It just seemed to me that maybe what we should do is contact some of our other friend radio stations and see if they will give us their policies to look at. It might be a lot easier than us trying to start from scratch.
Sure.
Well, I, I think we need to go back into our archives. Just because we don't remember that we have a policy on this. If we do, it's still there. So that will, maybe Adam can figure out a way you can get some of us to do some of that work for you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking a few people, it doesn't have to be you guys either, it could just be station volunteers, but to go through and kind of, and we'll keep, we'll certainly keep the documents we have, but if we can kind of compile them all, all the bullet points and I just, yeah.
This is means looking through a file cabinet, is that what you mean?
Not even, it's a folder. They're all there, they're all highlighted. It's going to be pretty straightforward.
Christine may know too.
Christine may know too, yep.
Adam, how many pledges did we have? How many actual people that sent? Because I'm interested in, I'm looking for member, you know, kind of, we're not a member organization, but...
Barbara did that.
Like about how many people gave money?
Oh, okay.
Individuals. But anyway, that, some...
There's more than four hundred.
I think it was five fifty, roughly.
About five fifty.
And the promos of, it's interesting, that's, it's about what we did last year, about three thousand?
Yeah. The PSA's.
When I heard that last year, you know, we all thought it was such, so many. It's not. It's not ten a day.
It's ten a day.
That's not many in being on the air, twenty-four hours a day. And one of our things is to, and, and one of the things we have to report is how we service our community. So I wonder if there's not a way we could look at improving the number of PS, these are PSAs.
Right.
These are not, you know, they're written very carefully. It's, you know, it's tell, don't sell. And I think ten isn't a good enough number. I wonder, you know, do we really have, do all the hosts understand that doing PSAs is really part of their show? Just because they have a music show, that doesn't mean that they shouldn't include some PSAs. Or is it, it's just a number that I wish was bigger. Anyway.
Just a question, coming from the commercial background. They're in the log, so you do them.
Yep.
Are they in the log here?
Same here.
Is there, like, are they in the log here? Does it say, for example, PSA?
Yeah.
Okay.
Several times throughout the day.
Okay, and it's in somebody's show? It's...
No.
You know, at this point, there's, the PSA breaks in national programming, but there are no, the locally-produced shows, there's no breaks indicated in the log for the show. It's just you get the hour or the two hours or whatever it is and that's it. You have the underwriter at the beginning and the end, and legal ID at the top of the hour and that's it. So, at this point, we don't have a mandate for show hosts to read PSAs during local shows.
And the host picks the PSA?
Host picks the PSA arbitrarily. Host picks the PSA arbitrarily. Um, there's a paid PSA program where we schedule them specifically. Volunteer member coordinator report. Uh, should, does anybody else want to give this? Because I've just been talking for a while. Okay. Um, so Andrea has been, Andrea's our volunteer coordinator. She's also our membership coordinator. So basically she handles, every time a pledge comes in, every time we get money from someone, she handles putting it into our system. We, we're continuing to get responses from the mailing we sent out in advance of the most recent pledge drive. So these are people who didn't pledge on the air, but who got a mailing ahead of time and are just now sending their pledge in. And Barb Demarest sort of hypothesized that these are people just making their end-of-year donations. They get an envelope from us, they set it on a pile, and then about this time every year, they go through that pile and cut their checks. Um, so that seems pretty likely. When sending out premiums for the pledge drive, Andrea expresses that it is much easier to send out something that can fit in a number ten envelope rather than a big honkin' turntable or something like that. Uh, cause, and it does cost us more money to send out those larger items. And, uh, in terms of gift certificates, we find that when we call a business and we just say, "Look, we'll print the gift certificate here", it makes the world turn much easier just because we don't have to wait for their gifts to show up in the mail. And who knows, it's an eight and a half by eleven piece of paper and we have to mail it flat. We did a query today to find out how many new members we had this year. And here's how it breaks down, and here's how it goes for the last several years. Uh, and so we are, we're in pretty good shape for this year, I think, in terms of new members, and that's, that's-
Considering all the turmoil.
Considering all the turmoil, it's just considering the fact that there are only sort of so many people out there, I think that that's fantastic. And look, yeah, I didn't look back further than two thousand and six, but those, you know, eight, seven, and six seemed pretty level. But, uh, in oh nine, we took a big jump, and that sort of held. And, uh, seems to be right about, we were right, we're, I'd say we're right on average from the oh nine to two thousand and twelve numbers.
Somebody said before that we're not a membership organization, so how can they be members? Are they just more people that give money, or, I mean, are they donors?
Donors, okay. So we're, yeah, we're using the word, or we maybe should be saying donors.
John, you had sent an email around about that, right, trying to clarify?
Yeah, there, there's, you know, properly speaking, legally speaking, a membership organization, the members would vote for the board of trustees. Would elect the board of trustees, uh, which is not the case here, obviously. And then there's sort of, anything else is, I think, called what's called a board-only organization. And they might have, um, you know, they can arrange things however they want. They could have certain percentage, part of the board is elected by members. But, uh, we, we don't fall into the category of a member organization as such. It is common practice for organizations to label donors, members, as a sort of promotional thing, but in any legal sense, they're not, not members, so.
But we don't, we don't send out cards saying you're a member?
No, and they have no, you know, they don't have any, any, uh, right to-
They don't, they don't get a vote.
Right, they don't get to vote for the board. Um, and obviously that's something that could be discussed as we look at bylaws and things. If that's a change we wanted to make, but, uh, but at this point, we're not legally speaking a membership organization. And we view us that we're a member, I think because it's, it suggests an inclusiveness that when we're talking on air about, you know, it's a, it's, you know, it's a good strategy for getting people to pledge. Sounds better than donors.
Um, I already broke down the sound supporter thing, but there it is again to see. We had nineteen existing. They, they brought in four hundred and ten dollars a month. We added forty-two, bringing in an additional five hundred and fifty-five a month. Uh, so we're near a thousand dollars a month in, in pledges we can expect, and, and boy, I think that's kind of cool. New volunteer Eve is a quality assurance agent, and she is a total sweetheart. And she has started working on an archiving project to pull out, uh, newspaper clippings, old issues of soundings, all kinds of cool stuff, and get it scanned in and get this stuff digital. So we can make it available to anybody who wants to see it whenever they want to see it. And this can benefit us substantially too as we, you know, go looking for old policies. If we, if we go so far as to scan in old board men, uh, board minutes and run them through, uh, optical character recognition to turn it from an image into text, then we can actually search through the text and we can search for words like "policy" and quickly find instances in old minutes where things happened. And special thanks to Anne for helping kick this off, get us going. Right now, we have a trainee for board operation, a guy named Simon. Uh, you might hear him on Friday late in the day. He gets it. He thinks a lot faster than he talks as fast as he thinks, and he thinks really fast. He's a great guy. Uh, and he's taken to it like a, like a fish to water, and he's got an idea for a show he wants to propose. But for the life of me, I don't know what that is, but, you know, I'm all for more proposals coming through. And thanks to Kit and Barbara for helping process all the pledges and do all the paperwork, um, associated with that pledge drive. Thanks to them, we sort of stayed on top of it throughout the drive, and we were kind of getting things entered as they came in rather than dealing with a huge pile of work at the end of the drive.
And this, these reports go on, out, where do they go?
Um, they get attached to the minutes. The station manager's report goes to listserv. The volunteer coordinator report could go to the listserv?
Yeah, why not?
I don't see any reason why not.
Okay, are you having more questions with Adam? If not, you'll thank her or not.
You're welcome.
Very good news in fact. Um, we have a time for, um, comments from the public, folks?
There's another opportunity later.
There's another time later. Yeah, Anne?
Did you say public?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make a comment about the member issue. You know, I think I have five letters at home from public radio stations, New York City, Boston. Every, almost every public radio station calls its members members and talks about membership drives. So this, I think you should try not to get hung up on the idea of a membership organization because it really does not connote that we're a membership organization or that anyone has a vote. It's just a way to refer to public radio, um, people who support, uh, public radio. So, that's my only comment. I mean, I think we should be talking about members, because everybody else does, so they must know something.
Okay, um, then moving on, um.
The proposed new staffing.
Okay, wait a second. Well, this is still a work in progress.
This is a work in progress.
Is there something here for this?
Yes. And so I'm gonna pass around a, so I was looking for a, an, a program that would do organizational chart, one that I liked. And I got a trial version of one, except they print on top of it that it's a trial version. So you notice this, exactly. So you'll know that I will not be buying that software because it's not a free trial version for thirty days. So, I'll pass that around, because this is, and there's little notes on here. This is something that was discussed in the executive committee, um, and this is a work in progress. Do you find it? Oh, there you go, okay. So I found another, another chart, um, version, software version that I like better, but I didn't have time to convert everything over yet. So as we make changes in this, I'll be able to move it around.
Maybe I should just sort of give you some background on where we began this discussion. Um, as a new board in April and May, there were a lot of tasks on table. And we handled the legal ones and the formation of a board, and having regular meetings, and getting a C A B going, and having fun drives, and ending the year close to in the black. The question of staffing was a harder, um, harder, not harder, thing to look at, and it took us a while to get there. So the way I, I drafted something as a work in progress, so we'd have something on paper to look at.
Adam, well, Adam, Adam did one first.
And the way I did it, Adam did one, and we, we took that one, and we looked at all the tasks and tried to figure out a way to revise it to show a bit more about where we are as a station now. And I, this, I think the intention was to divide some of the work in such a way that it's, that we have two distinct professionals on board. One person who is the face of the station in the community, um, a, a general manager, a station manager. And another person who is the, the programming side.
The sound of the station.
The sound of the station. Somehow, we were thinking, um, that putting these separate would make a lot of sense. Because we are becoming a more mature station in programming. We're looking at ways of expanding our programming. And it would seem that we would need to have some kind of expertise to guide a program committee in that, in that vein. So that's kind of why we did it. There are a lot of tasks that get done. We hope we've put them all there. We may not have. We also added tasks to the engineer that we hadn't done before. We looked at, uh, what the volunteer coordinator or the membership person does. And we struggled with that because that person, um, now is, was working part-time, on and off during the year, and now has been working more. Um, so we left that kind of fuzzy. Is that still a part-time person? There's a lot of tasks on the plate of that person.
Right, well, I mean, right now, that volunteer, if, if it were just the volun, if the, if the duties were only volunteer coordinator, probably would be part-time. But as Andrea has taken on membership, that's, that's another part-time, and, and it really adds up to pretty close to forty.
So that's sort of the background of where we are, and we'd like your thoughts.
So I'm gonna transfer this into a newer, uh, spreadsheet that's a little easier to read. And I apologize, um, for this, because I didn't go into my office in Newburgh on Tuesday because of a snow day, and I was out of town all day today, and the main copy is in Newburgh on my computer there, so. But I'm gonna put it onto a new spreadsheet that'll be easier. And if you have anything that you see, like John, um, Bachman suggested, um, that I, um, you know, take office supplies out of broadcast operations and program managing and move it into voluntary membership management. We suggested moving the facilities committee under the broadcast operation and programming manager, which we're calling the POP manager, and, um, for now. So if this, you know, as we talk about restructuring and where we think, what we, how we can make this better, or we can change this and, um, you know, and alter it and so it reflects what we want. Because when we go to advertise for our staffing, which we said we want to do, um, then this is important for us. So we know what we're, and also when we establish goals and objectives for the station manager and the broadcast and operations manager, it helps us, because we've, we've detailed what their jobs are gonna be. So this is a draft.
So Pat, you'd like us to think about this over the next month and come back with comments?
Yeah, email, comments back.
Yeah, I think we want to move it along a little quicker than that, because we, because we, we, um, Mike said he would give some assistance to this, how to phrase it, how to put it together. What would, do you want to say a bit more about what you're?
Yeah, just, I've been involved in a lot of hiring, and, you know, Sonya asked me to just give you a quick rundown on, on the way at least that I've been doing it. Uh, the first thing you start with is a really solid position description. It has to be very detailed. It has to be very well thought out. I think that that's what's beginning here. And then from the position description, you develop the ad that you're going to run for the position. And so you're, you, you've started all, already a cascade of events. Uh, and so you've got all of your, all of your requirements, all of the things, right down to how this person's ultimately going to be evaluated if they're successful or in the position description. That drives the advertising that you're going to do in terms of wherever you're going to run, uh, advertising. And then you need to form a hiring committee. And hiring committees, uh, that I've been involved with, we prize diversity. And so you would typically do, for example, um, here you might do one or two board members, a volunteer, one of the professionals from the station who are running it. And you try and aim for a lot of diversity in terms of gender and ethnic background and cultural background on that committee, so that you've got a wide variety of opinions coming to the table. That committee then develops a screening document for the applications that you're going to get. And so you, you apply the same screen to every cover letter, resume, uh, references that comes in. And from there, you develop the list that you're going to actually talk to. And while you're doing that, you, you come up with a list of questions that you're going to ask the potential candidates. And those, uh, and again, this is my background, everybody gets asked the same questions in the same order, in the same way. The only deviation is that you, if someone says something that's interesting, you can ask a good follow-up question. But the whole thing is a process. And then after you have interviewed everyone, you sit down with the committee and you begin the deliberations. And, uh, you might even call somebody back for a second interview. You might decide that of ten applicants, you want to talk to five. And of those five, after you're all done, you're down to maybe two that you really, really like a lot, but you want to hear a little bit more about them. So, the hiring background I have is all process. And what the process does is, A, it keeps you out of trouble, right? And B, it makes sure that you are really focusing on finding someone who, if you trace it all the way back up through that process, meets the objectives that are in the position description. And so that's, that's the background that I've come from. I did, you know, I've done some checking with our HR people at the college, and, uh, you know, that's my background. I get, I sit on a lot of hiring committees. I don't know why. I'm old. You know, they think, they think I know something. But that's-
We can straighten them out if you want.
What?
We can straighten them out if you want.
Yeah, I know, absolutely, you know, but they don't seem to learn. But that, to me, has been the way it has worked best. The you, really, the, the whole thing comes from the position description ultimately.
Like, I'm in the, in your experience with this, what's the timeline on the, from the time that we placed a, an ad? We developed this, the position description, we placed the ad to, um, through the process, on average?
It's a crapshoot. I, right now, we're, we're hiring, uh, a art instructor, right? We did the first round of advertising, and I got four resumes, um, three of which I wondered why they applied. They, their qualifications had nothing to do with the position description, all right? Uh, so we advertised again. That was about a month and a half. We advertised again. I've gotten three quality resumes in two weeks. So you don't know. It's who's reading what, when, and where you advertise. And I think that that's really important. And one of the challenges is that advertising is no longer inexpensive. If you're buying Times, Herald, Record, and some of the others, a, a, you know, that little thing that's in the paper on Sunday's pretty pricey. And so, uh, you know, I don't know if there's a venue for public radio where, uh, you know, that, that you, that you would use.
Craigslist too.
Yeah, um, and I would assume that there, you know, there's prob, the other thing is that you can do a lot of web outreach. We found that's a very mixed bag. There are web crawlers that seize on a word in your, in your ad.
I got one of those for-
Yeah, and so what happens is, you know, I put, "Art instructor wanted, uh, person with a good background in art history, blah, 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 blah." All of a sudden, I got people applying to be history teachers. Because it's, it's seized on history. That's all it saw. History, boom, and zing, you get a resume sent to you automatically.
Yeah.
So sometimes you wind up, wind up sorting a whole lot of stuff if you're doing, uh, a lot of, a lot of web. But yeah, it's, it's, it's always interesting, because you never know what's gonna happen.
Um, can I add a couple of cents to this?
Sure.
First of all, I think that you should definitely consider, uh, ma, advertising this nationally. This is the kind of job that people would move for. Lord, lord knows that there's a nation full of qualified applicants. So the NFCB list is a great place to post jobs like this. But then again, you're only, that's only going to radio stations. It's only going to non-com radio stations. You could identify some metro areas or some suburban areas around metro areas, put it on Craigslist. That's free. It's gonna be a little pain in the butt to get it all up there, but again, definitely think about nationally. The other thing is that, from what I understand, the committee that hired the prior manager really did due diligence and did a lot of work and, and, and it took, you know, really thought long and hard about it and wound up with someone who didn't, didn't work out, let's just say. Uh, but it, it didn't have to, it was, I think it was pretty clear to a lot of people pretty early on in that manager's tenure that it wasn't going to work. And I just want to encourage you guys to build some kind of a policy perhaps uh, that enable, enables a, a real honest feedback to come to the board and to, to not let that manager stand in the way of that feedback, um, to avoid a similar situation. I, I, you know.
And we just at the college are coming out of a fifteen-year period where our board of trustees honestly thought they had hired the best candidate for, they did a lot of due diligence. And again, early on, the difference was that that board buried its head in the sand. And, uh, and that was, it wasn't the people weren't talking to them, it was that they weren't listening to them. Uh, they ignored or afforded no confidence, for God's sakes. So, uh, I think that, that really is important. Looking around this board, I don't think that's gonna happen here.
I don't think so either, but you know what, in another ten years, in another board, another manager, it could happen. And, and it, I, it, it can, I'm sure it can feel really hard to admit that you've made a mistake or to go through all that work and think, "Oh, God, we gotta go do that again." But, you know, that may be what it is. So, that, those are my two cents on that.
Exactly, like a probationary period of functioning and operating.
Yeah.
I also think that, going back to my comment on the position description, if you have evaluation based upon the position description and other things, and if you truly are doing evaluation, it will become evident if there are problems. And you just need to act, act on it.
I'd like to address a few comments to the, the number two position, which I think is, in a lot of ways, the biggest departure from, from the model we've had.
The bottom?
Where we've had an assistant manager in the past who would be working on the events and fundraising and kind of everything that the manager's doing, just, just assisting him. And, and I think in, in the preliminary discussions about this, you know, probably the two biggest departures, one would be, we're really creating a program director-type person for the first time in the station's history, that someone's really on staff, is tasked with really tracking what's going on with the programming, working closely with the programming committee, which may need to become somewhat revised in its structure to reflect this new relationship with staff and how those decisions get made. And, and I, I think that's a, gives us a lot of unique new opportunities. So the, the thing that's not on there, and I would, I would like to advocate for it strongly, is that that number two person also have in writing job responsibilities for overseeing public affairs programming in some ways, being actually involved possibly in producing public affairs programming. That we're looking, um, you know, maybe this is just my way of thinking about it, but I put the idea out there that we, you know, we've talked about possibly in the future, it's not in twenty fourteen, because it's not in the budget. We might have a news director someday. We're trying to do local news. This person could, if we design it this way, be a bit of a bridge to that future where, you know, in some ways, for the first time in the station's history, we say, "We're actually gonna pay someone to be involved with making radio, rather than only pay someone to train volunteers to make radio." We can actually have a staff person who can, that hopefully has some kind of journalism background, who understands community journalism, who understands public affairs programming, who, if, through feedback from the C A B or suggestions from our listeners or, or members or volunteers, if we get the idea that there's a desire for certain kinds of public affairs program we don't have right now, can this staff actively recruit volunteers, maybe help oversee the program, help, help launch a new program and get more public affairs content on our airwaves? And I would really like to empower that. I, I'd like to advocate that we empower that person to do that, and that's an official part of their job description.
So one of the things is to add that statement to this.
To the second.
If, if, if people are into that idea, I mean, I'm just throwing it out there.
Is there a sense that we would-
There was also a, a talk or comment that we made about salary parity, that we felt that, um, the salaries for these two, the yellow squares on there are the salaried positions, and everything else is volunteered. And so for those salaried positions, we have, bookkeeper and the engineer are on, uh, on another budget line. They're under consultants, on contractors. Um, so, but we, we did think that between the station manager, general manager, whatever we end up calling that position for the purposes of this demonstration as general manager, or the broadcast operation and programming manager, whatever we end up calling that, um, that we felt that they, their salary levels should be pretty much on par with each other.
Not the same, but not, not like, you know, one at fifty thousand dollars and one at thirty.
Right.
We felt that would be too, but that's something.
But we thought that they should be close.
Mm-hmm.
And the relationship between the general manager and, uh, the broadcast operations? Would that be formalized, or would that be some kind of-
Right now, there's no reporting of that.
There's no, there's no line on that. And, and so it's, you know, and that was deliberate because we hadn't decided, you know, how that's gonna structure. The lines report back to the Board of Trustees on those three positions, on the membership manager, volunteer membership manager, broadcast operations manager and general manager. But we didn't establish hierarchy among the three, although the, it would kind of, a natural assumption that the general manager would be the go-to person on the hierarchy chart, but I'm not, we didn't, we didn't establish that yet. So we're bringing this back for us to decide how we wanna structure this.
I didn't really mean to imply that there should be a hierarchy, just the power they related.
Well, there has to be, because there has to be. It just can't be everybody standing around holding hands singing kumbaya, there has to be people in charge and so-
Any longer.
Any longer, kumbaya. But, but the way it was went with, with the previous design, anything that was assistant manager would do would go through the manager. Every single decision. Well, we don't want, the design here is that a broadcast person would go ahead and do the broadcasting, you know, every decision isn't passed through. You know, the, the station manager who has a plate full of other stuff. I mean, the people would have to have some sync about their personalities and be together.
I think that, you know, just first blush, the general manager is the trustee's representative to the rest of the station and the rest of the station's representative to the trustees. And on a day-to-day basis, you need somebody who can make a decision. The program manager, if, if there's a quandary, the program manager can't round up us and say, make a decision. And every model I have ever seen, the general manager is the one who does that.
Okay.
And, uh, to me, that, that makes a good deal of sense that you need-
So on this diagram then, the general manager, the, the line of chain of command goes, general manager, there's a two-way arrow from the general manager to the broadcast operations program manager.
And then back to the board because-
And then back to the board.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think one distinction might be, in the past, we've had, the, the board has hired the station manager, the station manager has primarily hired the staff. I think we'd like to have the board or a hiring committee appointed by the board, hire the, the two top positions.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I would suggest that, you know, that the priority would be the, putting the general manager position, you know, first and then having the, the general manager perhaps be a, a member of that committee.
Yes, that's what we talked about.
They certainly need a voice in that area.
We talked about that. We also talked about the fact that when we post the general manager's position, we may very well get people who are qualified for the broadcast operations and programming manager. And we, we thought, we knew we wanted to put the general manager then on the hiring committee immediately so he could be part of, you know, the establishment, he or she, sorry.
Um, any thoughts about, um, a development person in centralizing those tasks?
Uh, um-
No.
No, I was thinking, we thought about, we thought about the whole underwriting, or maybe this someone's, this was not, someone's idea was, what if we were to take three months of the, of the year and do a blitz of underwriting and hire someone on a commission some way? And, and go out and seek underwriting?
I, I was talking here more about a person being focused on, um, membership and events and, you know, any of the things that are basically the, the revenue producers.
Those tasks, a lot of events and that are under the general managers primarily was-
Right, and I'm saying, you know, I, I would at least give consideration to having this third person have, in an essential response-
Volunteer and membership manager, expand that role?
Well, not necessarily, maybe switch some of those tasks to the other two boxes, but having, have one person, um-
That would be a part-time person? Who would have to, there wouldn't-
Yeah.
I mean, I've, I've seen some of the things that a lot of the underwriting was done on commission.
Right, and I think that's, that was, that's what Sonia was beginning to talk about, but what I'm, what I was really referring to was-
Pledge drives and events.
Pledge drives and events.
And it was discussed that some of the volunteer training tasks might better fall under this broadcast person than, than the coordinator, the volunteer coordinator, while some of the schedu-, maybe some of the routine scheduling and things might be fine for, you know, this position, volunteer coordinator, whatever it is called, to do, but, yeah, it could be that, you know, I think we can move these things around a fair bit at this point and try to figure out what the time, the workload is going to be for each of them, because it feels like we've, haven't done that kinda math on here to figure out if this is a realistic, you know, these realistic positions we've created.
So if you took, um, another, um, uh, box, under bookkeeper, under the general manager section, and moved out of his, um, big list of, of tasks, a pledge drive and the major events, and put it into a developmental, that's what you're suggesting, a separate person, part-time to do those things or?
Um, I'd, I'd rather think about this a little bit, Pat, and perhaps, you know, send you some suggestions.
Yeah, that's what we want you to do, is think about this.
This is very hard to react to cold, you know.
Can I, can I just give you guys one more thing to sort of think about?
Wow.
And I'm feeling a little selfish here, but at the same time, I just wanna throw this out there. Let's say you advertise for a GM, you get a lot of good applications, there's a guy who's, you know, I put my name in the hat, there's a guy who's better qualified than me and you go with him or her, and I would totally respect that. And then I'm kinda left without a job, kind of, and I maybe apply for this other bopum job. And let's say the new GM is on the hiring committee, doesn't like me, uh, do I, you know, what, am I looking at losing a job here? What's the, what's in it for me?
We talked about that. We did talk about that.
Think about that this month, maybe?
Yeah. No, I mean, we are hoping that current staff apply for these jobs. I really felt we should advertise them at the same time, because I know I've interviewed people for jobs and, you know, she came and it was obvious this was not the right job, but the other job which I was gonna announce in a week was the one that this person could have fit, it happens more commonly. Okay, well, I think probably-
Yeah, so I just, I did ask the question of, of our HR people, um, can you accept an internal candidate? Just, we like you, you can stay. And she said that she saw no impediment to that in anything she had ever seen, that, that that possibility existed. I don't wanna say anything in terms of anything other than possibility, but that-
I don't think you should do that, by the way. I don't, I don't expect that, nor do I think it's a good idea.
No, but I'm just saying, we asked, I asked the question because I was curious.
It's a good question.
We also talked about, um, you know, given the restructuring, which one you would prefer, quite frankly.
So, we, we talked about that too.
Define the roles, the positions a little more.
I think we're really dangerous territory here.
Okay.
But I do think, I do think Adam raises an important issue that, that, that we need to fully understand and, yeah.
Yeah, I think that once each of those positions are clearly defined, when you said, what are the exact job descriptions?
You need to look at the position description.
Once you outline exactly what the position is, what's entailed, what's involved, then you, we could decide how to break it up and-
So that's what we need you to do is to, we, we respond first.
No, no, I think we wanna, we wanna be a little more focused on that. I want some people as a work group, not a standing committee of this, to meet now. And I want, if you would agree, to have a draft presented to the executive committee by, say, the second week in, in January with, you know, we'll get one that we buy or something without a trademark. And put in these other things, because we, we really need to move ahead. There, it affects so many things, like the program committee and the CAB, and we can't go month to month. So, those of you who have strong feelings about them, I would really urge you to, you know, do that. So I'd like to make a motion, I think it has to go as a motion, that a work group, a work group be formed of, put your names forward, and that you prepare a draft for the next executive committee meeting, which will be the second week in January or something. And that we, we kind of go over that, and then we have something to present to you, more, a little fuller, fleshed out.
Okay.
Do you envision this work group to work primarily online? Because it doesn't, it doesn't need to be a public, uh, announced meeting.
And I think, and you know, maybe the time has come to put out on our list, I mean, we advertise parties galore and we, you know, that we are, we are thinking of, of restaff, you know, put on, at least to our volunteer family, that we are working on this. You have any ideas, send a note to these people.
Yeah, some of these people have been, have been volunteering for twenty-plus years and they may have some really good ideas.
Yeah, this was only a first draft, really. And it was based on Adam's task. It is, it is stunning when you look at all the different discrete jobs that go into this, it is stunning. So I think if we step forward and say, we know there are a lot of jobs, we have to divide it somehow, because it's just too much, it's too much. Okay, that motion is on the floor, I need the names of at least three people who will work on it.
I will work on that.
Kevin had asked me earlier if I could, you know, you asked that, yeah, it's on the floor.
So it's Mike, Pat and Kurt and Kevin, okay. So, and we'll put in the date of the executive committee later.
And I'll put it in a format that we can all kind of, um, work with.
Okay, and then is it fair to say that by consensus, we are agreeing to this, um, this division of labor, so to speak? Yeah, okay, I just-
Before we leave this topic, I was just wondering what the thinking is behind taking the facilities committee and putting it under the programming?
How could you have a committee of the board reporting to, uh?
You can't.
You can't.
Well, it was, John Bachman suggested, I, because I originally, as you can see, diagrammed it reporting to the board and under the Board of Trustees. But John Bachman also suggested that the broadcast and operations requires direct contact and, with the facilities committee. That, you know, if there's a problem, we're not broadcasting, if something goes wrong with our signal, that's, it's one of his, um-
Maybe that staff person is sort of de facto on the committee.
Or maybe it's the engineer part?
Well, what if, what if the, the back steps break and, you know, we can't wait till the next board meeting to fix them?
General manager.
We need to allocate fifteen hundred bucks.
General manager, I think.
You know, I don't remember exactly what I said, I think, you know, it's, it's facilities are listed under the broadcast person's responsibility.
See, I see that the, the programming committee, you have a programming committee and then you have a programming manager, right? So those are still two separate entities there.
Right.
So why don't you have a facilities committee and then a-
Right.
That works with the, uh-
Yeah, either, either, well-
I think you put it back where you had it originally.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I don't remember what I meant, I don't think I was talking about move, you know, the facilities committee at this point is a standing committee of the board and it's always gonna be, I think I was thinking more who, who they work, interact with on the staff. And, and I think I might have had in mind the idea that of particularly the aspects related to broadcast studios.
There was one other comment you made too, there was a lot of overlapping, you thought. So, so when you're looking at this diagram again, look at the overlaps. I mean, there's a way we can make it, we can clarify it.
Regarding the facilities committee, when, when talking about engineering stuff, you're gonna get someone who knows what they're doing. I mean, aren't we? I mean, if we're gonna redesign the, a, a building or something like that, we're, you're not gonna-
I don't think you need someone who knows what they're doing, Kevin.
No, there's somebody who knows how to do that.
Probably somebody who knows, like, I think it's, I think it's-
That's why we're taking it back.
I think we need to spend some time on this, you know, before we-
Okay.
Yeah, so, but we have a plan to move us forward at least by the executive committee and then by the next week. So can we move on from this?
When will the next executive committee be?
Oh, we'll, we'll, um-
Set a date, hold on, I got a calendar.
I'll get the calendar and we'll tell you right now. Which night of, of the week, uh, guys?
January, January, January.
How about Thursday the ninth? Thursday is good for you guys?
It's good.
Is that good?
For the executive committee?
Executive committee.
So you need to fly the line.
The ninth.
All right, and we're gonna be in the greenhouse at six thirty?
Mm-hmm. And that can go, you'll put it, one, nine, six thirty.
One, nine, six thirty, greenhouse.
Okay, moving on to the CAB.
Okay.
Allee.
Sandy.
Wait, hold on.
Wait.
We did not get a second for our vote on that.
Who made them, I made the motion, I can make the motion, some had seconded by- Oh, the motion is that, um, Pat, um, those four people, Mike, Kurt and Kevin, will serve as a work group to, um, flesh out the staffing pattern.
Create a draft.
Create a second, a draft, and also try their hand at a, um-
Help one of that?
Oh, I said a-
As well, firm the position description.
Position description.
Okay, good.
And, and present that at the ninth, you know, to the board, executive committee, and then we will include it on the meeting, at the meeting minutes.
Good.
Okay, that was it, and it was, I made it, you seconded, Kosta seconded, any discussion? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Okay, moving on.
Moving on to the CAB. Sandy, nice to see you.
Hi Sandy.
I don't know everyone, my name is Sandy Oxford, and I'm on the newly formed CAB, but I was on the previous CAB for about ten years. I have our minutes from the November meeting, I don't know if the, this board has received a copy. We had a December meeting, but those minutes have not been approved yet, so Kevin has them.
Those minutes are on the website and, and the studio, if anybody wants to just download them later too.
I also have, uh, we're, we're very excited, we have a, a member, an interested community member who wants to serve on the board. So since we need approval from the BOT, I'm presenting you with Judy Heinley's resume. She is overly qualified and she seems like a real gift in the areas that would benefit, um, programming, connection to the community. She has a doctorate level, uh, administration in public health. So she, she really has some great insight into the community and from, from her, her lens of looking through things.
Does she have a gas station in Keshetan Center?
I don't know.
You know Heinley's in?
No, I don't.
It's held the same way, I-
I'm sure, it's-
That's the old story, maybe it's that family.
Good possibility.
So I recommend that she be accepted to the CAB.
We have a motion, except is someone who Pat seconded, any discussion?
How many does that bring the CAB to?
Okay, so we also have made a decision to not include three people who were on the CAB. And doing some quick math, I think that may be, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Twelve people on the CAB.
How, how, what was the story with the three people?
So we had three individuals who had expressed interest, um, good people, really, really good people, Matt Fromis, Carol Ryan and Claire Coleman. We, I, I know I was assigned to outreach Carol, so I know she's like extremely busy, she's a wonderful person and I think we always should keep her in the loop because of, at least I'll just speak for Carol. However, they've not replied, they've not attended, and of course, we value their opinion because we know, at least I know two of the, the three people here. So they're always welcome to attend the meeting. But at this moment, the consensus of the group is if you do not attend three consecutive meetings and you haven't called with an excuse or just to say whatever, you know, um, you're out.
Let's, Matt Fromis, Claire Coleman?
Yeah, and Carol Ryan.
R-Y-A-N.
Do you guys need some, motion to dismiss them or anything? You don't need a motion to dismiss.
I don't think we need to like decertify them or anything, I think they can do that internally, yeah.
So we have this motion on, uh, for Heinley, all in, and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Okay, so Carol.
Excellent, that's wonderful, because we need, you know, whoever shows up and has interest and has good energy, we're happy to have them aboard. The CAB's meeting monthly right now, I think, uh, there's talk about keeping it that way and as, till we get things moving. And then, I know in the past, the CAB has met six times a year, four times a year, but for right now, everyone's committed to meeting monthly. And the next meeting is the first Monday of January, which is the sixth, January sixth. We meet here.
Saying that quarrels at these past few meetings?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you're documenting in minutes who is in attendance?
Yes, I didn't bring December meeting short minutes because they have not been approved.
That's fine, good, you're approving minutes.
I wasn't there, I was recovering from all the civil disobedience at Black Friday at Walmart. And the Sapporo's thirteen that got arrested.
Did you get an Xbox? I hope you got an Xbox.
No, 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 we didn't, we didn't, but I, um, I'm glad that I was able to come tonight and report.
You know, just yesterday, um, the NFCB had a webinar by a man by the name of Robert Winteringham of a public media consulting group. And Mitch and I listened, Kevin, no, listened, and Adam is going to do it too. It was at, related to compliance and the things that we have to be sure to do in order to stay in funded. And if, it's forfeiture is not a fantasy, it does happen to people who don't do what they're supposed to do. But one of the things they talked about at great length-
But one of the things they talked about at great length in terms of compliance, besides diversity, transparency, data security, was open meetings, was the C A B. And we have to have proof that we have a functioning C A B that meets regularly, that could be once, two, twice a year, or whatever, that people attend, that it represents the diversity of the community, they do, they do their job in advising the station, and it's really important that we have this. And I think we're on, on the road to doing that, Sandy, and I wish you'd express to the members that we very much appreciate their work. I'll write some quick summaries of this, and, and Adam is gonna do some more after he's listened to it. It was a very informative webinar, and there are some things we...
Did you record it for the rest of us to listen to that?
Well, we can, you can just go to the NFCB website.
No, and, and anybody can go to the NFCB website.
I will send a link to the board address.
And you can, I, I think this is correct, Ann. We can, anybody can go to the website, and I think it's, what is it called? It's something five or...
The five, five by five, right.
Five by five, and they can find it in there, and I really recommend that all the community advisory board members do that. And maybe we can just send a direct link to the C A B?
Yep, I'll send it out to the list serve, to the board, to the C A B.
The, the one thing that is... That Adam mentioned, we talked about this earlier today, that we have to decide on is what diversity means. The C A B does not tell you diversity is having, you know, one Latino or two, whatever. It doesn't. We have to decide on that for our own attachment area and write it down. So that will be something in a new year. Okay.
Last day, I just wanted to introduce my son Desmond, who's with me tonight. He used to be my engineer when I used to do once a month for Marcos with Panorama, and I know Kurt and Kevin both trained him on the board, I think Desmond was...
Come back anytime.
Six, seven years old when he used to do that.
Oh, wow.
It was a while ago.
Excellent, good to see you.
Um, we, we had, um, bylaw, the work group is, was not meeting, they will report next time, so let's move on to the treasurer's report.
Okay. So, a couple things, I made copies of this, for those of you who didn't bring copies with you, if you want them, so there's a balance sheet, there's two pages in that, so take two and pass them on. And the profit and loss, there's three pages with the profit and loss.
What are you starting with there? What are you starting with?
Um, let's do the, uh, profit and loss budget versus actual. All right, and these are coming around, too. I made some copies of these, so there's three pages with this, so take three and then pass them around, and we can go from there. So this is, uh, the date on this, this is Barbara Donatelli, our bookkeeper, um, who does these reports for us, um, does a great job. The date on the report that she generated was December ninth, um, and this is our profit and loss budget versus actual. So remember, we went over this on our tutorial. So this is year-to-date, basically, so, um, your budget's on the right-hand column, and the year-to-date is on the left. Please notice, on total benefit income, on our first part of revenue, we exceeded what we had thought we would raise for the year. So we had budgeted thirty-two thousand dollars. We, at this point in the year, December ninth, have thirty-three thousand, two hundred and sixteen thirty. So if there's other, we have some fun, other money coming in.
We have another event.
Right, right, that's right, we have a benefit event this weekend, and so, so that's a good thing. Also, we, um, we finished the total government grants and all of the second part of the, we got more than we thought in foundation grants, um, and we finished the second part of the grants, sound, the total government grants, at higher, too. So ninety-six versus ninety-three budgeted. Those are good things. Um, we only earned ninety dollars and twenty-four cents against the thirteen thousand dollars that was budgeted before for interest, but that was a bad thing. But that was an erroneous entry, they should have never assumed they were gonna get thirteen thousand dollars in interest. The member drives, um, we've known for a while that what was gonna hurt us because we only had two, but, um, you'll see that as of the beginning of December, we, we know we still have money coming in, that we, um, you know, that it's obvious that the third drive would have made up that difference, but I think you'll see by the end of the statement that we've made it up in other things. So we seem to be on track with a lot of things we're not, we have cut some expenses, too. So as you go through, um, we'll do a year-end, uh, report for us, um, by, at the next meeting, but I'll probably send it to you by email, um, when Barbara generates it, so you can see how we actually finish off at the end of, uh, the year. But we're doing, we're doing well. The other page that I give you is your, um, the second page was, excuse me, the balance sheet, and that just shows you where we are today, how much is owed to us, and how much we've received, what we're basically worth, our total assets, and our total liabilities. So we really, um, don't have a lot of, um, money that we owe, um, but we've done very well. So we have, our assets are six hundred and one thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-four. That'll change a little bit toward the end of the year. Okay? Those are the values of the properties that we own, too. Also, on my treasurer's report was that we are working and researching on managing this station's money more efficiently. We're looking into specific areas, credit card costs and managing investments. So on the investment end, um, there's a meeting scheduled at Wayne Bank, they're, they hold a C D that we have, um, and, um, there was a meeting that we had with them to, one, review the C D and get a proper signature on there, because we have new people signing, and then to talk about their wealth management department with respect to our Vanguard investment accounts. I was unable to go at the last minute, but Sonia and Barbara Demarest attended. Do you wanna give us a quick breakdown, Barbara Demarest?
Well, they, uh, we had a meeting with two people from the, um, from the trust department. They spent, um, the first introduction period in the meeting, um, going over a portfolio allocation model with us that they recommend to their, their clients. And then we asked what they would specifically look to do as far as, um, you know, advising us. They then proceeded to make recommendations that, in my view at least, contradicted the model that they had just explained to us, which made me lose some, you know, some level of confidence in what they were all about. But essentially, what it came down to was that they were suggesting that for seventy basis points a year, um, on the portfolio value, or point seven percent, which would be a slight discount off their normal rates, that they would, um, suggest that we, you know, look at, say, a fifty-fifty, um, division between, um, equities and bonds, and they suggested three, um, mutual funds in, well, uh, for the bonds, mutual funds for the stocks, E T Fs, um, that we would, um, you know, make an even distribution among those. I, I kind of came away from the meeting feeling that we could probably get, um, at, you know, do at least as well, you know, for lesser, lesser costs elsewhere. But we, Pat and, and Sonia and I had not had a chance to kind of have a deep breath after that meeting, so I'm strictly expressing, expressing my personal views on that.
And we also, um, continue with the research, um, cause we reached out to Delaware Valley Arts Alliance, as I said, in the report I sent you. We talked about the name of the company that she used for credit cards, um, and if she, who she was using for investments, and, um, she is using Catskill Hudson Bank, um, as their banker, and she said Catskill Hudson Bank turned her on to a credit card company that gave Delaware Valley Arts Alliance twenty percent cost savings annually in their credit card costs. So I called Catskill Hudson Bank, they have a branch here in Youngsville, I talked to their branch manager, Ed Phillips, who I know from Leadership Sullivan, and it's a contract that they have. They don't do it themselves, they contract with another company, it's called S B Merchandising, it's a Hudson Valley company. And I, um, went on their website, and they represent a lot of not-for-profits and agencies in the Hudson Valley. So they're local, um, and the man was wanting to come and talk with us. And so I, um, suggested to Adam that Adam and Barbara Donatelli and Andrea, who do all the processing of all of the credit cards and all the uploading of all that, schedule a time and date when they can, you know, this gentleman will come and meet with you, and then we'll, some of us will do everything that we can do to get there. Uh, but he was willing to come and talk to us about it. And I told him that, you know, the plan was that we would have a new vendor, um, in place before the spring fund drive, or at least somebody that's charging us a lot less money. Maybe it's our old vendor.
That's what the credit card we're talking about.
We do a hundred thousand... Yeah, we do a hundred thousand dollars a year in credit card bills. That's a lot, that's a lot. That's a lot.
We could save.
Right, yeah, so we're paying fees to the credit card companies, and everybody's taking a piece of this, and a piece of that, and a piece of that. So this company does a lot of not-for-profits, and I, I think I sent out to you the link to the name of the company. I looked at their website, and they, you know, they're, they're also, they, he already told me, he said, oh, we're big financial supporters of a lot of things, too, maybe, you know, kind of like, hey, hey! So, that's... Right, so, um, anyway, so we were talking to that. But, and, and that took us back to the investment thing.
Well, uh, I just, next steps with future pay, that we also had the conference call?
Yeah, you had that one from Texas, right?
Right.
Yeah, and then conference calls came out to, what?
The, the, we had a, we had a call with, um, you know, we went to one website which led to another, there's a lot of this kind of contracting outfit seems to go on. And we wound up on the phone with a company called Future Payment Technologies, or Future Pay Tech, and they claimed to be able to eliminate some of the fees that we pay every month and reduce the fees that we pay per swipe. And their organization also has the ability to, we, we actually have two separate credit card processing entities going to work for us. One of them lets us log in from the office and run cards, so if we take a hundred food stock reservations, we run the cards ourselves. The other processing organization hooks up to our website and lets individual users go online and make their donation online. So Future Pay Tech will, has the ability to kind of give us all of that in, with one, one bill, which seems like a nice idea to just simplify. As it happens, actually, one of the organizations that we currently use also has that capability, both using the, using what we already have and to, to, to pick up the web pledges, or switching gears to this Future Pay Tech thing and having them do the web pledges. Both of those are gonna involve a pretty reasonable amount of sort of web programming to get it hooked up to our website, whereas the, the outfit we're with now for our web pledges, one of the reasons we went with them is because of how simple it is and how little we had to do to set that portal up. John, does that make sense?
Right, so, so we're just doing some research, um, due diligence to see if there's a better way for us to process it that could save us money.
Yeah, one thing that's come clear is you gotta, you gotta pay money to do this. You gotta, you gotta pay to play, you know?
Um, the other thing, um, to finish with this, was that, um, Catskill Hudson Bank does not have a wealth management. They suggested we use Merrill Lynch, Barbara Demarest has talked to, um, an investment manager that she knows, who said we can, we should move it into a different fund for now, until we...
Well, yeah, I mean, basically, it, I had made the suggestion that, you know, we could just put it in a different Vanguard fund that's more of a balanced fund, where the manager of that fund has flexibility to move it between different kinds of instruments, and then we wouldn't be in the situation of we're locked into a bond fund and, you know, the bond buses, you know, left the station. So I, I called my investment advisor to say, is that a completely crazy idea? And he said, no, it's not, let me look, there's probably a couple of different Vanguard balanced funds that you could look at, and I'll get back to you in a few days.
So that's easy, because it's already with Vanguard, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, and, you know, the fees are really very low.
Are we considering any index funds, or just managed funds, or, I mean, or, you're talking about a managed fund, right? So there's fees with that, right?
Yeah.
So if you have an index fund, there's a lot lower management cost on that.
There are index funds as well, but the index funds are equity funds. And I don't think we want to be a hundred percent in that one, so.
I think, um, putting it into something that it's not losing, bleeding out that it has been at this point, um, for a while, as we come up to speed on this, um, and decide, you know, if we need, if we need an advisor that we pay to handle this, because obviously you just can't put the money in there and leave it. Most of us have experience in it on a limited basis through a retirement system, on where we have very little to say about where the, you know, I know, I get a statement every once in a while, but that's about it, so, um, but we, I, you know, we have, somebody has to have the experience, Kevin.
Where, what, you know, what fund, what markets we're going into, and...
Do we have an investment policy?
I mean, do we, do we wanna save, we don't wanna...
Right, we don't invest in weapons.
Kevin, I, I, I can't, I mean, I couldn't really vote about this.
I have no experience with this managed money, but when they showed us the investments...
And that's, that's what's been making its way around.
The, um, you know, the, the type of sector, there would be healthcare, energy, so forth, and, and when I looked at it, I mean, I personally wouldn't touch any, three-quarters of all those people. All the energy company was every big oil company who's ever had a spill. I mean, and it, but we, we have this money, we have to be responsible for this money. It's a hundred and twelve...
Fifty-five, yes.
Yeah, I think there's ways when...
And there must be, so, we, we did, I did as much as I could, and Barbara knows much more than I do, and, and talking with other people, you have some people who know a bit about this and who have some experience, and we, you know, we have to try to manage the money. Sayingly, but, I mean, Walmart was there, big and, you know...
Yeah, yeah, it depends on who we wanna, you know, invest with. I mean, we could, we could put it in something that doesn't earn us as much money, but is something that there, as a board of trustees and a C A B, and you see that we all philosophically kind of agree with that, um, but that's a decision that we need to make, so.
The thing that was interesting to me, and was kind of new news, cause Sonia did ask him about social responsibility funds, and he said, well, they didn't really deal with them, but yes, they were out there. And he, his, his, you know, the way he characterized social, social responsibility funds were ones that did not invest in, um...
Tobacco.
Tobacco?
Yeah.
No, they, he specifically mentioned tobacco, gambling, or companies that manufactured birth control. That was the realm of social responsibility.
I think it's a much bigger field than that.
This is a work in progress, so I think we have to move on.
There's just one last sentence on that report, was that we got another phone call from Albany regarding our grant application for the Power to the Tower.
Oh, yeah.
And we had to, we were given several days to provide a boatload of information, once again, which we...
We were given like one day to provide a boatload of information.
I remember that, I remember. Anyway, but we did it, it's up there again, and so...
And no, no word from them, right?
No, no, but at least they keep calling us, so we're in the, we're in the running, so, but we did that, so, done.
That's positive.
Yeah.
Okay, um, finished with the treasurer's reports, no more questions on this, then we'll move on. Kurt asked to have a bit of a discussion.
Don't we accept this? Do we, do we, we vote to accept this treasure?
Yeah.
Okay, a motion to accept the treasurer's report. Mitch, seconded by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay? Carrie's. There've been a lot of discussion on the list about programming issues, and Kurt would like to bring us up to date on some of the things that are being talked about.
Yeah, I don't know who has been keeping up with the high-volume traffic or not, and, and feelings about it, but it's, I think we're kind of remiss if we don't have some, some discussion about this. I, I've gotten the feeling from program committee members as well, as some things that were written on the list by station volunteers, that they were hoping to have the board kind of clarify that structurally, things are either working as intended or are not working as intended, and that, you know, the only way we can, um, say as a board where, if, if we need to say anything at all, it is, is to have some discussion of it. So my, I'll, I'll just kind of briefly lay out where I'm at with it, and I don't expect everyone to agree with this, but, um, you know, I think our system right now is a work in progress. I think as many things are in the station. I think how we're making programming decisions right now is somewhat imperfect and probably always will be, but hopefully we could improve it. But I do think that what we have right now, as our bylaws stand, is basically the, the structure we're working under until we formally make changes, um, that committee is working the way it's supposed to, and it, it does have the mandate to make programming decisions, and particularly, um, somewhat routine ones, like responding to volunteers asking for a time change for their... like responding to volunteers asking for a time change for their show. That's, that's, that's their, that's some of their regular business, they should be doing that. And, um, you know, since this whole kind of station turnover, we've got seven good new people on that board that we have appointed from month to month here. We've, you know, we have names come forward, we approve them. Um, we haven't amended the bylaws yet, so the description of what the program committee is, how it works, who it reports to, still stands until we make changes to that. And, um, I, you know, I, I think there are a lot of, you know, there's all kinds of strategic questions about how we want to make programming changes in the future that really need to be addressed. And I think we do need to be more strategic and I think the C A B's input needs to be better reflected. Um, the C A B, according to the N F C B, should be, I've got it in front of me here. Reviewing the programming goals established by the station. The board still needs to establish programming goals, then the C A B can reflect on that. Then the board can take those comments from the C A B. Then the board can pass those comments and constructive suggestions, whatever they may be, on to the programming committee. We haven't done that yet, but in the meanwhile, they, they still have requests for new shows to be approved, for programs, you know, to change the time slot, change the day of the week or whatever. So, I, I personally, I'm uncomfortable telling them, they, you know, we, we wanted them to be independent. We, there was a feeling under the previous regime that that committee was micromanaged and managed in secret by the station manager. Now, now we've got good people in the room having deliberate discussions about things and soliciting public input. And, and then they're making their best, most informed decision recommending those changes to the station manager. And then the station manager still has, you know, and this, we have to clarify, but as I see the system now, I mean, they're still basically advisory. We're supposed to stay out of the process, but I feel like they, they present this to the station manager. If the station manager sees technical or other reasons why some of the changes can't or shouldn't be implemented, then, then, then it can get kicked back to them. But, um, I think we should stand by the work they're doing and also understand that we have a lot more to do to improve the process. Um, and in some ways, I feel some of the criticism that's come in is kind of misplaced directing at the P C. I think it should be directed at us, because we, we're, we're still running behind schedule here to kind of get the, I, I, I think we need a better, I think. Well, the whole thing that Adam brought up about, you know, what actually is the policy for making program changes? Is it written down? I mean, I think it's, I think it's informal and we just have sort of passed it on and given it to the, the current P C as a mandate that they have discussions, they take public input, they take survey data as it's available at each month's meeting. They take, uh, information that we pass on from the C A B, they take all available data. And then they have discussion, then they take a vote and, and that's how they do it. If we want it to be different than that, then, then we have to draft something different than that. And, um, I'll yield the floor for discussion. But I, I, I think we have to stand by them, you know? We, we told them we wanted them to be independent and we wanted them to get to work and they've done it. And now we're, it seems like, you know, in some quarters, we're saying, hold on, don't, you know, don't, don't do it. The, the process isn't perfect enough. And I, I just personally feel like we have to have their back, you know? We, we, they're, they're operating under their mandate and until we change the rules, they're operating under the, the rules that exist, so.
Well, from reading some of those comments, weren't they saying that they made some proposals and then other people said, no, we shouldn't do this and we need a policy by the board of trustees? Are they, are they, did they ask us for a policy statement or, uh, what was the gist of the conflict that was in the, uh, in all the emails? I mean, they wanted to make some changes, is that correct? They, and then they got criticism from that, yeah?
They, I think in trying to solicit as much public input as possible, they have announced sort of broadly that, um, they have some proposed changes that they would be voting on in their next meeting and, and soliciting even more input on that. You know, give us feedback on that, come to the meeting, give more feedback before we actually vote on this. Um, a lot of those changes, I, I, this is personal opinion. I mean, I'm not trying to speak for anyone other than myself here, but I, you know, I don't think it's like this radical makeover of the schedule. It's, you know, Mike Barnofsky, two guys talking sports is on Monday. He doesn't want him to be up against Monday night football. He's been asking if you could move to a different day. They're trying to accommodate that, move him to a different day. Some of the Saturday afternoon, local hosts wanted to flip flop slots because it worked better for their personal schedules. Um, does it disrupt the flow of Saturday in a, in a significant way? You know, their best decision about it was it, 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 it didn't wreck the flow of Saturday enough that they couldn't accommodate the host's requests. You know, I think, I think probably the, the biggest thing that involves syndicated rather than, you know, just requests coming from local hosts was dropping the true to three P M weekdays hour of canned classical music and adding a syndicated, you know, national public affairs program on point, which I think comes from B R in Boston. You know, I mean, it, of, of course it raises a bigger issue, like what's, what's the goal? Where are we going? What's the vision that they're trying to implement? And I think we have to get involved, actually have written programming goals. Then they can reflect all their decisions and discussion against those programming goals. And I think the whole new staffing model that we laid out, um, it's, um, you know, no, no, no disrespect to, to Adam who's very involved in the process, but we don't have anyone right now on staff who's tasked to follow this stuff in detail and be deeply invested in the process and sort of speak for the station in terms of this is the vision and give that committee some direct guidance. And, you know, I think that's part of what we want to achieve with, with, with this, with the new staffing positions as well, to help that committee have more guidance.
I think the, some of the loudest voices that I heard, uh, in that discussion, I, I don't think any of the voices in that discussion said anything like these, these, these suggestions are, are, are lousy or these programs are terrible. Instead, I think the focus was, you know, we can't, we don't quite know how you arrived at these decisions. Um, we don't know what process you followed to reach this layout. And, and the other thing that, that I heard a lot of was that it seems to be a lot of changes kind of all at once. And whether or not that's a good thing or a bad thing is, is here and there. Um, but I think rather than the, the complaints being about the specific choices made, it was the way in which the choices were made. And again, this kind of goes, and this discussion that I had for a half an hour with these guys at C P B, he said, you know, the, the story was that, you know, he made these sudden, these sudden changes and somebody made a stink about it. And if it's one guy making all the calls to, to, to set the tone and the voice of the station or if it's a committee of a dozen people from all corners of the county in the listening area, they're both going to encounter backlash from people who disagree, from people who have their own ideas of how the station should sound and feel personally affected when, uh, you know, the view of the person charged with making the decision doesn't line up with them. And the, 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 the line that the C P B gentleman gave me was that if you have a series of steps, if you have an instruction manual for how to make changes and you follow that every time you make changes, you can at least say, here's how we got where we are. Th- these are the rules that we play by and we've played by them and we're at this point and we're going to make this change based on following these rules. Um, and it struck me as a pretty good idea. And I don't know whether I feel like we should put everything on hold until we make those rules or if we should, you know, let the P C do the job they've been tasked to do. And then once these rules come into place, we can ask them to start playing by them. I, I feel a little bit of both ways. I'm, 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 if, I don't, nobody's asked me to really say what I think should happen here and I'm happy that no one's asked me that because I don't quite know. But I just think that the, the outcry was not necessarily against the specific choices which were made, but it was more against the way in which they were made. Yeah, the process.
Well, but the process, we have the committee, right?
The process is, is basically in tune with what the bylaws and everything is, they're, they're following the rules that we've given them. We haven't really given them very clear rules. It seems to be a lot of just trusting their best judgment and that they're going to act in the spirit of the station, which I think they are doing. But it, it's the.
They, they meet monthly, they discuss, they receive correspondence, they have public committee meetings.
Yep.
And it's, um, it's, it's pretty minimal, this, the structure that they're working with. And I think they're doing it in good faith and, um, I, I'm in absolute agreement that I think we need to design the system better, but I, yeah.
Can I just get a clarification, because it goes back to the diagram of how we want to structure? So, this is a group that's been meeting for, for months along with us as we worked a restructure. Maybe the workload is coming from the previous administration too, because I guess the, there wasn't a functioning group at that point in time, so there's a backlog. So they make these recommendations, the changes to timing and maybe a change in the programming on Saturday afternoon or every afternoon from two to three. And they present it to us or they present it to Adam?
They, they don't, it, and, and again, it gets murky, but my historical understanding of this is, um, the board of trustees' responsibility for programming is only in the most broad sense of keeping the station on track with following its mission statement and achieving its goals of service to the community through community radio, through public radio. But specific program decisions, this, this board should never get into micromanaging specifics of programming decisions. And I think historically it hasn't, other than, very recently, the, 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 I think the board president was, was on the program committee. So I don't know, I wasn't in those meetings and I don't know exactly how the business got transacted.
So if they present this report, then it goes to Adam to be implemented? Does Adam, as the station manager, have the ability to say to them, you know, I like the idea of the Monday night football thing, that makes sense to me. I like this other idea that makes sense to me. I would recommend that we don't do the afternoon classical music change right now. And is, is that under, in his ability to do at that point?
My, my understanding is yes, and I don't think it's written down, but I feel like the station manager has always been able to kick it back and suggest why it might not be workable. What do, what's your take, Kevin? Because you've, you've seen this thing run for a long time.
It's generally the, up to the station manager to make those changes.
Yeah.
And the, on the advice of the program committee.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like they're almost advisory to the station manager, but generally the station manager wouldn't refuse to implement their, their ideas.
Usually the station manager's involved in those discussions and, and it's almost a consensus of, uh, process in, in those meetings. So usually, it's rare that something would come to the P C that the station manager hadn't already been participating in those, those conversations, you know?
The, the way it's written in the bylaws is, is sort of, the station manager works with the P C. So it doesn't, I don't feel like it clearly spells out anywhere in our governing documents that I've seen that this buck stops here.
I, I, I agree, I don't think it's written down clearly and I also feel like that, that's been sort of the tradition and I think we probably have to get rid of any other things in writing about this, if, if, if that's how we want to do it.
I think what I'm concerned with is, um, I don't thi- I don't feel anybody here has any ideas of micromanaging and want to insist on things. But we've only, we've been through tremendous upheaval in a lot of months. Now, you have several of you mentioned bylaws. We're still trying not only to change bylaws and to find better investments and to manage our money. We are doing a ton of things. And, you know, I absolutely am grateful and I respect everybody working here. But I was somewhat surprised at this, what seemed to me a speed of change. Um, because when, when the changes were made would seem to be capricious, capricious, what was it, a year or so ago? It just seemed, all these changes were made, wham, bam, thank you, man. And so I still hear from people that complained car talk's not where it is, you know, just in conversation. I still hear people, and maybe they don't take the time, and I do encourage them, write it down, send Barbara your response. Not everybody is responding and we would like them to. So the fact that we have been grappling with so many issues, and I respect the fact that they have been dedicated, I don't doubt their good faith for a half a second. But I feel that they may be a little bit ahead of us, because I think that the dust was just beginning to settle. And I don't think anybody is looking to micromanage. I don't think we're just, you know, trying to narrow any kind of taste or anything. But I kind of had the idea that we wanted our C A B to be our ears and eyes and to represent the community. And, and what is, and I don't think that our C A B has had a chance to do that, because everything is still new. Everybody is working hard and I respect everybody working hard. But I just would like, for example, the C A B to be, you know, developing and getting their own wings back before the program committee is, is off and running. And I'm not saying that maybe they don't have good ideas and I certainly respect the fact that our hosts may have individual needs. Absolutely, I can appreciate that. But in terms of like substituting a national program for another national program, I don't know, could that wait a while? I mean, if they, if they're, if somebody is coming forward with a new program, absolutely, look at it, give them, help them out with it, give them honest feedback. But I just, I'm not sure about like swapping national programs for national programs right now. Uh, but again, to me, it feels like speed. And I say that in the context of the fact that we come through tremendous tur- turmoil. Everybody is working very hard, everybody is really of good faith. But it just feels like, to me, I want the C A B to come back and report to us and talk to us and, and let them do their work. And I think that, it's true, we don't have the bylaws, we don't have process, we don't, we're not clear on goals.
But could I, let me read the bylaws on the committee, because I think you're saying they're doing what they say. These are the bylaws on the program committee. The committee's responsibilities include all matters relating to on-air and online programming, including maintaining the quality of existing shows, assessing and overseeing the development of on-air skills of volunteers, assessing and approving new shows, local and syndicated, scheduling programs and identifying areas where programming needs strengthening and working to fulfill these needs. So, they're proposing to do that. Just, that's what our bylaws now say.
I mean, if, if, if I may, I, I don't disagree with you at all. I mean, some of the, taking a syndicated program out and, um, adding another syndicated program, I mean, that's, 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 that's totally acceptable. But in, and you know, um, Ke- Kevin and some others brought up a really interesting point that, you know, strategically, if we're really trying to cultivate, um, a lot of new, uh, volunteer-produced local programming, we want to make sure that, um, when those shows are up and ready to go, if it's in two or three or four or five months, that we can create the space readily to, to put those, those local shows in. And if we've just inserted a new national program and just start trying to build an audience for it and suddenly three years later, or three months later, we yank it, it, it makes us look a little schizophrenic. I mean, there's all kinds of strategic reasons why on a large scale, I agree with you, that we shouldn't just be, just doing this wholesale swapping. I just don't think, you know, A, these changes are that extensive and I, I, I guess, I keep coming back to, you know, what you're saying that we're, you know, we're, everyone's working hard, we, we've been so busy doing so many things. If you think of how many motions we've passed since, they've been meeting since July, we've been meeting since July. We've, we've probably passed sixty, seventy things, I don't know. They're, they're, they're seven bright people, they're as bright as we are, they were given a job to do, they're doing their job and they, they, they pass a few things. And then if we tell them, no, you can't do that, I just feel like we're pulling the rug out from under them and we've really disrespected like their, their, their last five months of work. And, and a lot of them might just take, take a hike at that point.
And if I may, that, you know, the, you know, your comments are exactly what they were asking for initially in, for their meetings. These are scheduled changes we're considering, give us your feedback and, and that kind of comment of.
Too much too soon.
Too much too soon or one network. Too much too soon, or one network program for another network, or as Kurt said, let's reserve some soft spots in the schedule that we can maybe move into later. It was all exactly what they were looking for, I think, um, in the call for, for feedback. Um, and I mean, it's kind of echoing what Kurt's saying, you know, we've put really good people there. I personally trust that they would arrive at good decisions, which may very well be exactly the kinds of things we're talking about, where, you know, the schedule change that really accommodated a host, allows this good program that we value to continue, let's do it. These other changes, it's too much too soon, seems to be the general word we're hearing. It's not that critical, this doesn't happen to hap, have to happen now, let's wait till we hear more from the CAV. Or let's wait till we get more surveys returned, till we have more information. And even the station manager could kick that back and say, you know, "I feel like we, we didn't really have enough information here to make this decision. I don't, not that it's a bad one, but let's wait till we get more information." But anyway, my point, I guess, is that I trust these guys in their process, partly because we appointed them and I know who they are. And, and they've shown, you know, Julia's shown great willingness to, to get input from the community. And I feel like tonight, we need to decide either we're telling the PC to go on hiatus till we get the rest figured out, you know, till we've got this programming policy, you know, program decision-making policy in place and program statement in place, so that programming goals can be evaluated by the CAV, so that they can give feedback, so that we can give the PC feedback. Whatever timeline that may be, we're saying, "PC, no decisions until then," or we're saying, "We trust you to act, uh, in good faith, to, on, on the mandate and the bylaws." But I think they want that clarity, whether they're to continue meeting and continue doing their work or, or not. And I think that's the, the decision they're, they're looking for from us tonight.
I'm in favor of giving them the authority that, to do with what they've been doing. I mean, I, you know, no decision, even the decisions that we make, um, made, has been agreed to by everyone. It's impossible for an organization to please everybody, you can't. And there's always going to be decisions that someone may have an objection to. Um, the thing that I liked about the conversations and the emails and the discourse on the listener and the email was that it was a free and open exchange of ideas. People disagreed, um, some people may have crossed over a line of appropriate conversation between friends a little bit, but they, you know, maybe apologized afterward, and that was fine. But from what I was told when I came on board here, a year or two ago, there wasn't any dissension. It was censored, there was no discussion, and things were censored. And so, in this open and transparent environment that we're creating, that we're very strong about, we're gonna have fights with each other, we're gonna disagree, and sometimes it's gonna be nasty. Um, but hey, that's life. And so, they're doing their job, and I think we should let them do their job, maybe to the letter of our bylaws at this point.
Well, if we want to do that, there are some of the things in the bylaws they don't do, and I wish they would do them.
Well, then, let's give them some guidance.
And it is, it is the thing about identifying programming and help, help the program form. Right now, the pattern is someone has, they want to do a classical music show, they come. We're looking for different kinds of shows now, and some, some people have to reach out for them. If we want to do any public affairs shows, somebody has to can, can dream of a way to put together public affairs programs that make sense. And why can't the board do that, the program committee do that?
I think John used a crucial word, which is trust, which what I, what I was thinking when I was viewing email exchange. I said, "There's still a lack of trust here." Uh, that, um, given what has happened in the past, people are gone shy. And so, there is, there is a lack of a level of trust that needs to be addressed. I think the best way to do that is to say to the program committee, "We have a, a, a statement of what you're supposed to do. Please go do it. The Board of Trustees will, as someone said, have your back on that. If we make a mistake, it's not so hard to fix it." Uh, and the other thing is, and, you know, I, I chatter too much about my commercial background. At six o'clock in the morning, I worked at a station that went from down-home country music to top forty, all right?
Big change.
Big change, all right? Since they fired all the disc jockeys, guess who was on the board? Me. I was the part-time, and the phones lit up. And you want to talk about how emotional people get over radio programming, they do. Well, thank God, that's, that's the way it's supposed to be. And, uh, I, I think that we have good people, I think we need to reestablish that trust. To me, the best way to do it is to say, "We trust you. We ask you to, if we tell them now, 'We trusted you and really, by the way, didn't give you much guidance. So, you took your head and went and did a lot of work.'" And now, we're gonna say, "Gee, we don't think so." I think that sets a really bad tone. And I don't think that the downside, what bad happens if we follow that? If it turns out the shuffle doesn't work in two or three months, you shuffle it back or, or make another change. Uh, I, you know, my feeling was that they had worked very, very hard on this.
Mike, do you really think that shuffling back and forth is, is just a little thing?
I think sometimes it is. Somebody said, "One, one national program for another." Uh, I think if it's a local program, it's a little bit different. Uh, but I, I, I don't think it's a huge deal, no, I don't. And again, I, I come, you know, I came from a different background. I come from the commercial world. If it doesn't work, you change it. And, uh, I, I don't think that these things necessarily aren't going to work. We don't know that. We can't put change on hold forever. And the danger is that if we keep parsing everything, that's what's going to happen. Take a risk, might be fun.
Yeah, but the juxtaposition between commercial and community is, is vast.
Oh, I, no, I understand. I, I get that. That's why, that's why I preconditioned it. But I also say, what is, what horrible thing happens if we're wrong? We change it. That's, that's one of the great things about community radio.
Can I-
The TASA has something.
Well, I'm just thinking, we task them with, while we're going through all this shuffling and, and moving around, and we know all the things, the little pieces that you mentioned with investing in. And we task them with making the station still sound good while we go through all these changes. So, when the listener turns on the radio, no matter what we're screaming and, and running around and pulling our hair, the listener doesn't know that, does not know that, you know? And I think that since we get, and, yeah, I like that trust, you know? We, we've got to say, you know, "All right, let's try this. I trust that you are gonna do what you said you're gonna do, and, um, let's, let's see what hap-" You know, because I, I wondered, where did they find those shows? My God, that is so cool, that they were actually able to pull those, because I, some of them I recognized. And I said, "Wow, that's really cool that they could pull a news programming." And yeah, I like the classicals, you know, that's how I do my work, but, you know, I could listen to that. You know, so it was, it was a welcoming addition. And so, as a listener, and sometimes when I want to comment, I have to say, "Okay, I have to use this email, so it doesn't sound like it's a board comment, but it's a TASA listener comment," you know, so that it doesn't get murky. But, you know, I trust that they're gonna really pull that off, like I think they're trusting that we're gonna pull all this together.
One question that I have, and Kurt, maybe you know the answer to that. Um, the listener surveys that we've been, um, tabulating over the last couple of months, has the, um, program committee, you know, kind of parsed through those and, and analyzed what they tell us?
They, they've used whatever survey data was available at each, at each monthly meeting. So, I think, as of the November meeting, I think this batch of a hundred in a spreadsheet or whatever probably wasn't there yet, is that correct?
No, well, they would have had most of that by then.
Okay, well, then, then I think they did use it. Uh, Ju, I, I spoke with Julie the other day, and she was running through what they thought they had gleaned from that, which is, um, you know, some of it's useful and some of it's, you know, some of the comments are, "Great job, keep it up," or, you know, "One comment for a program, another comment against it," and they kind of cancel each other. But there's, there's useful trends in there, and, and they're looking at them.
Because, you know, at this point, I've mostly been, you know, inputting data. Um, and I have not stepped back and, you know, analyzed it. Um, I did go to the last, uh, CAV meeting and just kind of reviewed with the CAV, kind of like what's here to, you know, to, to dive into. I had not yet had the chance to do that with the program committee. But I would certainly hope, because we're telling the people who fill out the survey that we're interested in their opinions and so on, I, I do hope that they are, you know, that that's being analyzed.
It, it, it's being used, and I think it's, you know, one of several sources in an imperfect information gathering attempt. You know, they, 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 they receive a fair amount of correspondence. It's by email, by actual letter, they read it out loud, it's attached to their minutes. Um, they have public comment make comments during the meeting. They have surveys, data compiled by, by station staff or, or, or your committee. And I think that's gonna become a valuable tool. And, and I, you know, I think it would be great to work with them in, you know, in what form is it most usable to them? In what way should they best track it and log it over long periods of time? So, they can try to tease some actual trends out of it, so it doesn't kind of seem a little more like static. That, that, that's, that's, you know, I, I think they want as much input as they can get from as many sources as they can get, because they, they don't want to be working in a vacuum. And I, and I, and I feel like I see that in their emails, they're kind of sort of pleading for, for input, but it's, you know, Adam, you-
I want to talk to something that Mike had sort of said. He said, sort of, what, what, um, you know, if we get it wrong, what do we, what, what do we lose? What do we-
Yeah, what horrible thing?
What horrible thing happens? Well, we can lose members, we can lose listeners, we can lose donors. Um, that's, I mean, that, and, and it's not only the people who give us money that are important to us, but we can definitely turn people off, we can confuse people, um, we can make people lose their sense of belonging, because, you know, every day at two o'clock, when they turn it on and they get whatever show they, they always get, and then all of a sudden, it's gone. It can, it can, you know, just like you said, it can really incite, uh, a pretty passionate response. Um, the metric we have to see how big our family is, is basically the amount of money that comes in during pledge drives, and it's maybe also the number of new members that we get. And starting in about 2010, we did make pretty big sweeping changes. And if you remember the numbers that were up on the screen of the new members that we've gotten, from 2009 until now, we've been getting generally steadily increasing numbers of new members. So, I think, you know, I don't want to say for certain that, "Oh, the changes that we made absolutely had no effect on our bottom line or on, on our listeners." But, you know, the, the metric that jumps to mind, you know, we, we, we haven't made less money on pledge drives. I think we've done a little better, you know, we've, we've, we've gone for more money, and we've made that money in the last few years among these sort of pretty big change. We made a couple of sets of pretty big changes that I won't comment on. But, um, you know, if, the, the one fear, I think, is that we lose listeners, members, donors. We, we, we alienate and shrink our family, but I haven't seen that happen.
And, and I guess my, my question is, do you also, if you don't change, run the risk of not putting something on that's going to maybe bring you a bigger family? Uh, and, and no one knows the answer to either question, all right? But I don't think it's a horrible thing to make what has been described as relatively minor changes to the program's schedule and take a look and see what happens. Uh, and I, we're, we're never gonna know that. I, I mean, I appreciate all the efforts of the surveys, the sample's way too small to draw any real conclusions from. We, we can, we can hope, we can maybe see trends, but the samples are tiny. And, uh, it just seems to me that, again, going back to what you do with the program committee, uh, it seems to me that you support them and at the same time say, "We haven't done a really good job of helping you out, and we need to, we need to do better at that. For God's sakes, speaking to me, just think, give us a moment to catch our breath. This, all this can't happen overnight. And, uh, bear with us, because I wouldn't want those folks to lose heart."
Okay, yeah, Barbara, you have a comment?
I just, you know, just due to, to Adam's point, I mean, we had those, those numbers about, um, about new membership over the course of the years. Um, and we've been working really hard on, on doing database analysis. John was over helping us with that earlier today. The other part of that story, though, is what our attrition rate has been, and we don't know that yet.
Right.
I, I just, I just want to say one thing, because several people, well, several people, a couple of people said the word trust and having their back, that, uh, the, the program committee wants to feel that we trust them and that we have their back. If I ask them personally, or I ask anybody else to just, "Wait a minute, could you let me catch my breath a minute?" It doesn't have anything to do with the fact that I don't trust you. It doesn't have anything to do that, that I don't feel like I'm with you. So, I, I, I think it's, um, not the correct or appropriate, uh, language to say that it would, um, if we asked them to wait a little while or to hang in there, that we do not, it, it doesn't mean we don't trust them, it doesn't mean we don't have their back. And it certainly does not mean we don't appreciate it. So, it should not be misconstrued in any fashion that I don't trust them personally or that we don't as a board and that we don't have their back. I mean, the fact that they're working there, and we're having this long discussion, um, I think everybody here does appreciate their effort.
I'd like to say that, uh, anytime you make a change of any kind, there's plenty of risks. You may alienate people, you may turn people off. On the other hand, if not to make any changes, the, the, the system we have now, or the programming we have now, that was, that was established, but we, most of us agree, was a flawed system. So, changing that, I think the program committee should be very careful and consider all these things. But I assume that they have. I assume they considered all these possible consequences.
Some of the changes they're making are undoing some of the changes that were made in the last round, which were not, which turned out to not be such great ideas.
Yeah, so- When, when you say, when, when we make a program change, do we ever have it on the air? The program committee is now considering changes to the schedule. We'd like to hear what you have to say. We're a radio station, the best way to reach people is put it on the radio. Do we ever do that?
We have to see.
I mean, we announce parties over and over again. Do we ever say, you know, "The PC meets, but we are making changes, we are gonna change." Do we ever ask people?
Yeah, I think in, in the past, we have put the proposed changes on the website and then run a promo directing people to the website to see the changes.
But they were already decided they were gonna happen.
That may have been the case.
This would be more like, you know, they were, they were decided.
And the other bad thing is that when we made those changes before, the PC was supposed to evaluate them in six months, and they never did. But, I mean, why don't we announce we want to make changes on the radio? Because we have a radio show. I mean-
Would the PC, uh, make these changes as a proposal and then let the CAV look at them?
That's what they've done.
That's what they're doing.
That's, yeah, they made that proposal, they sent to the CAV and the board. We put them on the, it's actually on the website as well, the proposed changes.
So?
You know, last, last night's meeting, they were intending to vote on at least some of it, if not the entire thing as a package, and then the meeting got snowed out. And, and in some ways, it's maybe better because we're having this conversation tonight.
We have not decided on any other additional meetings for this group. And, you know, the time has come, I know Executive Committee talked a bit about it. We really have to do it sooner than later. In January, I think it's come time to set aside some weekend hours when we can just discuss some of these, not come to any decisions hidden away. But we have to have a little, the mission of this program committee, and then fitting into the reviewing the mission of the statement of the station, we need to really look at that again and commit time. We, yeah, Joel.
I was gonna, I was gonna say that. Um, the thing that really struck me about the email exchanges was, and being somebody relatively new to, to the area and, and, you know, coming to these meetings and absorbing more than anything else, because I am new, is just the, the level of fallout that still exists from the previous, I mean, it's, it's, it was a traumatic experience. And, and, and I think we're, we're, we're seeing that by the responses that, that, that were. Um, I also think that, um, Sonya, as, as you're saying, right, in, in terms of guidance, I think that all of these committees need us to figure out, to, to sit down with the mission statement, to sit down with, with the bylaws and, and kind of come up with something that's going to be the, the ground to, to work from, to, to guide everybody, it feels like.
Agreed. In the meantime, you tell them to go into suspended animation until-
No, I say, no, no, I don't know if this-
So, we're, are we saying now, this talk about retreat or whatever, that has to happen in January?
I've got some stuff on it.
And she has some stuff on that. And if we, we're, we're just toying with some compromises. We could say, you know, it's, Kevin, go ahead.
The retreat. All right, did you see the, the webinar, Pat?
No, I'm, I'm-
I think you're gonna need to watch it.
Okay.
Because they talk about retreats.
Okay.
And you can go to retreat, but you cannot talk about station policy, you cannot talk about-
We, we could actually do the whole thing in an open meeting, people could come and-
It has to be an open meeting.
We would do it as an open meeting.
I was gonna ask that question, I didn't know.
But I think we postponed that for long enough. The other thing is, is there somewhere we could, we could ask them, um, to do something more- The other thing is, is there somewhere we could, we could ask them to do something more? I mean, these surveys that we get back, the hundred, it's, we know what's wrong. Can they tell us, how can we do that better? Where do they wanna get input from? How do they, where should we look?
I mean, I think this is, CAB should be one of the places. And I don't know beyond that, a broad, a broader sample size in a survey?
Why don't we put it on the radio? It just occurred to me, why don't we have stuff on the radio saying, we we're considering changes to come to the meeting or?
Yeah, I mean, we can embellish that announcement to say, you know, this is what happened in a PC meeting. Get involved and send email.
Saying, we want you to do more, but oh, by the way, the stuff that you did, nah. And and I think that that's really, really important.
But I would go going forward, I mean, we we we, I I think it's almost mandated that we have programming goals because the CPB tells us that's what the CAB is supposed to be reflecting on. And I don't think technically we have them. I think that it it behooves us to to create that as well as clearer policies on this. And then also with the new staffing model, I think a a more a a really close working relationship with at least one of the staff members that's helping keep that committee, you know, attuned to these programming goals that we've established as a board. But, you know, absent that, yeah, it's it's a little bit of you know, you're working not in a vacuum, but you're working sort of in in imperfect feedback situation, trying to decide what's gonna make good radio. But I would say, you know, that the grid's been in evolution the entire time this this station's been in the air. It's it's not, this 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 isn't something radical that's happening right now. I mean, there's typically changes every maybe two or three or four months. A few shows change, flip flops, and just, yeah, I don't think this is like a really radical departure. And they're they're dragging us in a new direction we don't wanna go in. And Adam, I think if you if you see a specific thing that's in this this packet of possible changes that raises a red flag for you, kick 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 it back to them and say, you know, accommodating these host time, request changes, no problem. Moving this American life out of the 10:00 AM time slot because they're talking about doing coke and prostitution and it should be in the evening, fine. But this other thing, I got some concerns. Would you, would you, would you be willing to continue talking about this for another month or two and and see if you come, what you come up with?
So I think that the the sort of, the 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 mandate that the that the station manager actually makes the call is is unclear. And I think that if there were, if something were to come out of this tonight, it could include something to the effect of, you know, Adam's the guy that's gonna make the call on this, you guys do whatever you wanna do and but and give it to Adam. Not super comfortable with that, but if that's the way that it ought to be, then that you all think it ought to be, then that's then that's my job to do, I guess.
Who else would be?
I think it goes back to the trust.
I don't know, I can't, I can't think of anybody else.
It goes back to trust that, I would trust that you would work with them.
I sort of, I always felt like the PC would get one vote as however many members they were, the station manager would get one vote. And if they both voted together, it happened. If they butted heads, something else happened. You know, whether the board gets involved, which I guess that's not a good plan, but you're back to the drawing board or some, there's a third, there's something else happens when they disagree on something. Maybe that's the CAB gets involved.
Can I, can I speak, can I say something? Because just going back into my memory, when Christina was the station manager, you know, she often brought quite a bit, she brought a whole agenda to the CAB. When they were thinking of changing, they were adding another slot for the BBC and what time and, you know, everybody was doing gymnastics around that decision. There were, there were a lot of different programming, even with some of the 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 stuff that we brought in, like with Democracy Now! And just talking about time slots and some of some of those details. It wasn't that we were making decisions, but we were giving input, we were giving feedback. We were saying, you know, everyone's in the car at this time and this is a good time because people are in their commute. So we think that this is a benefit. I just recall things being much more organic, where the conversation kind of transcended through many of the committees. And then it was a station-wide conversation that was being had. One thing we didn't do, that I hear Sonia talking about, is someone said, we really never maximized the fact that we are a radio station and that we could put stuff out there. And now that we have social media and now we have all of these other mediums of of communicating and talking to people and getting feedback, that that would be an area I think we need to maximize. Cause in the CAB, there is a discussion. I mean, we have, we have newcomers and we have people who have been there. And and it's an interesting conversation and, you know, maybe it doesn't move quick enough for some of us who would like it to move faster. But we understand that some people need to catch up. And 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 maybe that's part of the discipline that the program committee is gonna have to make. Is that, you know what, we have to wait for some of the rest of the 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 committees to catch up to where we are. That you look at certain things and, I don't know, in a different hierarchy of of what to do.
You know, if the, since we asked you to speak, any of you guys over there wanna say something, three of you? I mean, since we had let standings be, yeah.
Yeah, I will say something. I think the first thing I would say is that looking at the older policies will lead you to know that there was that the program committee was advisory to the station manager. And that the description that Adam just gave of if if everything was fine and they agreed, a change was made. If there was any discussion, that's when it would go to the board, if there was some dispute. And also in terms of programming goals, I mean, we didn't have anything that was any more elaborate than what the mission statement was. It was not the mission statement, but there were goals and objectives. And I'd use one example, a a a goal and an objective was to increase local programming. So there were goals every year, measurable objectives, to increase programming by a certain percentage. That's the type of thing that you would expect both the CAB and a programming committee to look at. Or or to look at the percentages of local programming, period. So, you know, I'm I'm biased here because I was at the programming committee. And I know that the, that there was, at that meeting, and you were there, Kurt, there was a discussion of deciding the program decisions right then, voting on them without having input. And they discussed that and eventually decided that they would ask for input on the listserv, to the volunteers, to the public. So there was a potential that the decision was going to be made at that meeting. I I spoke at that meeting because I felt that having the CAB have enough time to articulate what their goals were and what they thought the programming needed, where, what direction it needed to move, would be a guidance to the programming committee. And issues like scheduling, that's something that the station manager should be able to decide. If it's a, volunteers can't do a program at a specific time. But I don't know what the rush is to do those other changes. And I don't, I don't think saying, it's sort of like trust but verify, you know? I don't think there's anything wrong with the board, not just trusting, but asking for verification. So when you say that the that the surveys are being looked at, is there, is that somewhere the evidence that that has occurred? Do you know what I mean?
In 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 the surveys, for example, you see some people want less classical music programming. That that's one of the things they're 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 acting on here.
I hear what you're saying, Kurt, but see, when I hear that, I wanna look at something. I wanna look at those surveys that Barbara's working on and see that that's actually statistically. It's not something that someone says, it's not a question of trust, it's a question of.
I just think they're another tool. I don't think the surveys can make the decisions. I think the decisions are gonna come out of discussion by the human beings in the room.
Sure.
There's seven human beings in the room that have a vote and there could be 200 people in the room if if the public wants to come and give their input. And I just wanna clarify, I was not at the November meeting that you were at. I don't think we've we've sat in PC meetings together. That's okay, that's okay, yeah.
Well, I mean, I guess that was my feeling. My feeling was, I'm not, I'm not aware of a compilation of, and I I don't say surveys make a decision, but there's a reason why we do them. And if we had, you said 500?
We have about 100 compiled so far.
Okay, and are those 100 from the the pledge drive?
No, they're from the pledge drive, they're from the music sale, they're from the auction.
The bulk of them are from the pledge drive.
And from the, from the tabling. And again, that's just the people who are pledging. But one out of five, if there were 100 and there were 500 pledges, people pledging? That's a, that's a pretty good percentage of surveys.
I don't even sure that 100 isn't statistically significant for our entire listening.
Not at all, not at all. No, I I would agree with you there. In any case, I guess I'm just trying to say that my sense was that because we've gone through this whole process and there has been disruption and there has been a history that we all are aware of, it seemed that taking the time to let the CAB first come and and at this point, the board come up with programming goals, the CAB assess those and comment on them, and the program committee work from that, it didn't seem an excessive delay to me. Except for those things that were necessary. Because to put on point, which I will tell you right now, I love the program, but you put five hours of a program and you get rid of five hours of programming. So it isn't minor.
To to that, two of those five hours are extraneous hours of performance today, which are, not to belittle anything anywhere, but 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 I do see what, I I I see what you're saying too.
I mean, I'm not, I don't really wanna talk about the specifics, you know, because that's not to, it's just, in in general terms, that's not a minor change. Five hours of programming is not a minor change.
But I but I would also say that six months of work by this new committee is not rushing, you know? And 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 I agree that the thing needs to improve as we go forward. And the feedback mechanisms need to work better as we go forward. And our guidance of that committee as well as all the committees needs to improve as we go forward. But, you know, in the meanwhile, I just, I'm just not comfortable saying there's something so inherently flawed in their their last six monthly meetings that we're we're not gonna accept any recommendations they make. But I'm I'm hearing what you're saying. I mean, the 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 feedback from the CAB, any feedback from surveys, all needs, we we wanna have confidence that it's a, it's all getting through the filters and being being used as part of the decision-making criteria. And I think that can be improved. And I, I I don't know, maybe we, if 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 people on that committee can't set up the mechanisms to make sure all available information's getting to them, then maybe one or two board members need to be tasked with, you know, making sure it happens.
I think we struggle with this, is there a firewall between the board and programming or not? I struggle with that because I don't really know. If you just think of the discussion topics here this evening, I don't know where the board stands. I mean, at one point, we said, well, okay, the board never touches programming. And another point, we said, well, if the station manager and the program committee can't agree, then the board does touch programming. I don't know if it's a moving target. I just don't know. And I think that makes it really difficult. And I think that that's where the policies come in. On the other hand, you can't suspend business while we create policies, which might take a while, particularly if they're gonna be good policies. So I think we have to achieve a compromise that says certain things will get done because they need to get done. And we'll try and address the broader issues as quickly as we can.
No, I I think you should put that in a motion.
What did I say?
Isaac, we want that.
Right now, we don't have a
Ultra.
A hiring policy, right? We don't have a hiring policy, yet we've hired people.
We we may have a hiring policy somewhere.
Okay, we don't have one.
Not in front of you.
And we may have, we may have a programming policy somewhere too.
Right, right.
But we've, we've hired people without having a updated employment policy. So, and if there's, if we come up with a policy and a and a current employee doesn't match that thing, then we may have to do something. But I think that the fact that we haven't come up with a big policy shouldn't mean that we should freeze the work of this committee.
I I guess I would move that the board recommends that the programming committee's work be forwarded to the general manager for action and that the board further recommends that the programming policies be developed as quickly as is possible.
Is that, can that be made into two, it's two different ideas, I hear it.
One is an action that we do. So you're saying we, you're saying we we are, we mandate the program committee to make the changes they think are essential in the program?
I said that the, that they forward them to the station manager for action as soon as possible.
And 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 upon their actually having.
Well, any changes they might recommend, okay, that any changes the programming committee might recommend be forwarded to the general manager for his action, okay? And that's motion number one.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that one. That they meet with the CAB to develop links to get greater community input. And they start doing that now and that they.
Can I put that in the second half of the motion, only because if we tell them that, they're gonna think they have to do that before they send anything to Adam?
I I also, I don't wanna nitpick too much, but I don't think those two groups are really supposed to like, I think we're supposed to be in between them.
CAB is supposed to be totally.
I I think they, the CAB serves us and we're supposed to pass that on and and we're, unless I'm misunderstanding it.
So just one motion that says that, say it again, cause John needs to get it.
Okay, wait, well, here's what I have. The board recommends that any program committee program recommendations be transmitted to the station manager.
For for.
Hasn't that already been done?
No, they haven't voted on.
Now, is this a major policy change we're making here in any way?
No, it's just instructions to the standing.
I would prefer a different word that I can't think of for recommends, because I don't think the board recommends anything, the board says what you're supposed to do. The board instructs?
Instructs.
Okay, yeah.
I'll send them to the motion.
Can we clarify the language before we vote?
Sure.
Okay, the board instructs that any program committee program recommendations be transmitted to the station manager for action.
For appropriate action.
Something too about they actually have to vote. When you say recommendations.
Approved recommendations.
Proposals? Are they propos, yeah.
Yeah, decisions from.
Decisions, yeah, okay, I like decisions better.
That means they already voted and come down.
Well, isn't that what David did normally?
I'm sorry, but but, okay, but they they forward their their decisions to the station manager for action that basically says, they make the call, they give it to me, I make it happen. Rather than I say, yeah, I don't know about that.
I think the latter, because you learned a lot from this man today on the, or yesterday, that that we didn't know at the November meeting. And that may come into play in your assessment.
Might one of your actions might be to say, you need to rethink this.
Yeah.
Given this.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it says for action means that you're, I think action's different than implementation. Action is that you, that that was my intent.
Yeah, I see what you.
It doesn't say, you must carry out this.
For implementation, it says for action, which may, which may mean, yeah, yeah, back to the drawing board, folks.
If everyone's comfortable with that, I'll accept the amendment.
Could you read it again?
The board instructs that any program committee program approved decisions or just decisions?
Decisions.
Be transmitted to the station manager for action.
As appropriate, as.
I I think it's, it's good the way it is, it's simple and and.
All right, so we have that motion on the floor, you've made it, Mike, second. We can have some discussion.
It's not right, it's not right. The for action doesn't.
And and what you're, the the language here doesn't really say, I don't wanna use this word again, cause it's been thrown around a lot. It doesn't necessarily say we trust you, it just means we're gonna let you hand it off to Adam. And what happens if I make the call that incites the firestorm that, you know, I mean, someone's.
Well, I think that comes with the territory.
Yeah, I hear that.
And, I mean, I, I think we're struggling with the words.
For action sounds, you know, could could very easily be read by somebody at another time and place as for implementation.
Okay.
So, you know, I think it 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 has to be, you know, for consideration.
Consideration.
Okay, next steps.
Next steps?
Cause the next step could be kicking it back or the next step could be.
Are we referring to consideration? To their proposals now?
I think we're trying to clarify how they work and I'm. I think we're trying to clarify how they work, and I'm yeah, I mean, it's, I don't know.
I'm, you know, I'm, I'm I'm not sure what, are we, are we trying to say that we're going to forward the current recommendations that they have? Is that what we're voting on right now? I mean, I'm
Whatever they decide, anything they vote on and through
Anything that they, okay.
Through their, their entire process of, of, of public feedback, and then they discuss, and then eventually if they get to a vote on something that the next step is that it gets forwarded to the station manager for
Do, do we think that this is telling them something that is different than what they would have normally done?
I, I think, you know, maybe why this is awkward is, I think we're trying to decide, do we need to and can we, and how would we go about sending a public message? That, um it, it's okay for that committee to work under the current model until we, uh, revise and/or improve it.
Kurt, I, I, I wanna go back to not the, the programming
Yeah.
decisions they're making.
Yeah.
But how they're doing it.
Mm-hmm.
And some of the things is that they're emailing or making deliberations in an email, which is not in open meetings.
Mm-hmm. Can I, can I say something? I got a motion on the floor. No, 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 we have a motion on the floor, and you have to follow parliamentary procedure, and I agree with you, we need to talk about that, but I think that's next.
Yeah, let's do this.
I, I, I agree with you, we need to address it, but I don't think it's part of this, okay?
We had a motion on the floor, did anybody second it yet?
I did.
Okay, then we can have discussion on this motion, right?
Right.
A bit of his more discussion on this motion. So Kevin? And you better read it again, John.
I think we came back, we come to consideration, accepting amended motions.
Okay.
Are you raising a point of discussion now, or please?
Well, I'm interfering with a motion, is what I did, and, so we wanna let the motion go, and then, and then track, get them back, which is
Maybe, maybe it's a matter that what we're trying to do here is to clarify our expectations of what will happen next.
Okay, so, if the program committee, Adam, come to some kind of agreement about a program change, is, then they notify the C A B? Is that how it goes?
I think you just do it.
Because I mean, you make a decision, and then the C A B reacts to it. Is that right?
The C A B reacts to the overall, um
To program changes.
Output, output of the station, the overall
Program changes, right?
I'm sorry.
I, I mean, I can read what the N F C B says the C A B is supposed to do. That the board, in this case, meaning the community advisory board, shall be permitted to review the programming goals established by the station, the service provided by the station, and the significant policy decisions rendered by the station. The board may also be delegated any other responsibilities as determined by the governing board of the station.
Doesn't really talk about specific changes.
The board shall advise the governing body of the station, that would be the board of trustees, with respect to whether the programming and other policies of such station are meeting the specialized educational and cultural needs of the communities served by the station, and may make such recommendations as it considers appropriate to meet such needs. It's, it's talking about the mission and the overall kind of contour of the programming, I don't, I don't think that the N F C B is saying the C A B should weigh in on grid changes, I think that's why we have a programming committee, that, that's, that's the body that we're we've mandated to deal with the nitty-gritty of time slots and et cetera. And, yeah, go ahead, Ann, yeah.
But, but the C A B is supposed to be setting up the overall overarching parameters by which the programming committee makes its decisions.
Yes.
So that the idea that you wait till the program makes the decision, and then you give it to the C A B
Backwards.
to respond to, it's backwards.
Yeah.
And that's what I was trying to express maybe very poorly, that the sequencing is, and, and the timing is the issue that I have, it has nothing to do with anything else but that, that the C A B hasn't had time, and the board hasn't had time, to come up with what the goals are, so the C A B can respond to them, so that the programming committee can make this changes. When you disrupt that, which is the way it's been, that there wasn't a functioning C A B, and programming decisions were being made in, in, without that essential input, um, that you're disrupting the orderly progression, and the progression that the C P B anticipates, and I don't know, Adam, you spoke to the C P B person, and what I'm hearing from you, I don't know what else he said, but it sounds as though what he was feeling strongly about was the fact that you needed to have programming goals. So it just seems to me that that would be a real focus of the board to take care of that, because the C P B, you know, I don't wanna go into it again, but we are currently under a non-compliance uh, situation, um, and not now, but in the past, and we're trying to make evident that we're getting back into compliance.
So the, the suggestion about, it was not about programming goals, it was about a programming, uh, policy, about a, not necessarily the the goal of the change in the programming, but the steps you take when you make that change. But that was basically, he said, okay, so there's two columns here, he said there's a C P B column, and that is, are you in compliance with your open meetings and everything? I said, yeah, he says, then there's another column, and that's not related to the C P B, and that's when he told me about his experience at a station, um, making changes, so, so the the suggestion of a programming policy was not, it's not a compliance issue, it's just a, a really good suggestion from somebody who knows what he's talking about. Um, but it's not a compliance issue, I just wanna be clear on that.
Sure, but the programming goals.
Not goals, but policy.
Second part of my motion, which we bifurcated, alright, what, that, that, and, and I think then Kevin's point comes into that second part of the motion as well.
But, but, does that make sense?
It, it does make sense that we need the complete model, and I guess the only question that, that, you know, the entire board is trying to discuss is in this transitional period, we did ask them to start meeting and working on programming issues, um yes, we need to have the complete model set up going forward, do we negate their work thus far, and I think, I, I think that's the question, you could argue it either way, I'm not, I, I I completely appreciate what you're saying, it would be better that way, I, I'm just personally not certain that these are such monumental changes that they can't go ahead, particularly as regards accommodating local hosts requesting time changes, which, which is about half of what the stuff is that they're doing, but I don't know, I mean
You know, I, I, I'm in a disadvantage because my history goes back to when the program committee was advisory to the station manager, and it just is inconceivable to me that the station manager wouldn't have the authority if volunteers can't continue in their time slot to say, we're switching. You know, you know what I mean? That that wouldn't be a management decision in relation to volunteers scheduling, or things that wouldn't be possible.
Yeah, I mean, I think over the last well, I can't say exactly over what period, but, you know, the, during Christine's tenure, when I was sitting on the P C, it, you know, generally as a courtesy to the P C, and also because they were just sort of invested in, you know, they had digested what the whole grid looks like, if you know, if it was two, two show hosts that wanted to flip, you could probably just do it. If someone's moving to a different night, which in this case, the, the sports program is gonna move it, then there's a couple moving pieces, and then s- I think if the process appears and is genuinely more open if the entire committee is involved with it, rather than just the station manager handing down a decision about maybe three or four moving parts, and it looks kind of like decisions with very little input, or no input at all, only, only coming out of Adam's head, but where, where do we go with this?
Can I hear my motion? That's okay, it's, we, we'll make it better, that's
Um, I already wanted to change the wording. Thematical, it's weird. Um, the board instructs, uh, see, this doesn't really make sense, board instructs that any program committee decisions be transmitted to the station manager for action.
I think we thought consideration.
For consideration.
Consideration. I, you know, I think it would sound better if it says the board instructs the programming committee
Exactly.
to transmit
That's fine.
their decisions to the station.
I'll accept the amendment.
For consideration.
For consideration and action, or for consideration and
Just story. I'll make it harder.
I've been serving that for six months.
I just go back to the point where we don't have a hiring policy, yet we do want to hire.
Oh, can we, can we, can we finish this?
Yeah.
So, we have this motion which we won't read again, we remember it, right? And it's been made and seconded by somebody.
I, I would actually like to hear it again.
Yeah, go.
Okay, uh, the board instructs the programming committee
Program committee.
Program committee to transmit any decisions to the station manager for consideration.
Are we still open to discussion? Could we insert the, about their decisions that it's received up, you know?
Can you live with it just the way it is?
Public input, or, 'cause I think that's the, or some, some
Are you then accusing them of not having public input?
No, but I think before I wanna vote yes to that, I, I wanna make sure that they're, they're doing their process correctly, which it seems to be the main concern by people who
Well, then, when presented to the station manager or the general manager, wouldn't he say, as part of his due diligence, um, okay, show me why you base this on? I mean, isn't that part of the process?
Saying if we're putting our stamp of approval on it, I want it to reflect the best possible process, that, and it's, it's, it's kind of, it's sort of skeletal right now.
I think you go back to trust, and I would not expect the programming committee to send something forward had they not done that, uh
The bylaws require, don't, aren't, they're required to
Yeah.
meet openly and
And I think the second part of your motion might address the public.
It could, if we ever get to it.
So, so, so this, this, this motion basically says, the board says that we should be doing things the way we, the way it says we're doing, the way the way it says we should be doing it.
The way it's currently said should be done.
Yes.
I, and I think it gives them, I hope what it gives them is a, a, a little bit of approval that, yes, they're on the right track, and that, and that this is what we expect of them.
If, if, I'll get back to the policy that, that you wanna try to get in there, to insert in there, is, there's been, I mean, if you look through those emails that were going back and forth, they, they've been, um discussing, uh, programming via email, and in this last webinar that everybody watched, that's a meeting.
But it's less or less, it's the
They're meeting, they're deliberation, they're deliberating, and you, you cannot do that, 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 you, unless you can make that open to everybody, you cannot do that.
Well, then I think that, that's something else that you have to address, but I don't think, I don't think that impacts
Exactly, but what I'm saying, I think that's, it's fitting in with, I mean yes, we trust them, but do we trust that they're doing the right thing? When we're learning ourselves what the right thing is.
Well, I mean
But how many meetings have been referred to here? They've had all kinds of meetings, that they did the email thing when they shouldn't have, that's bad, and we should stop that, but that doesn't say that they did not do the other things that they were supposed to do, which they apparently have done. But, so, I don't think that there's an issue there.
But if I follow Kevin, he's saying that if they've had deliberation via email, it wasn't, it wasn't public, and it's, it's basically incorrect, they, 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 they can't deliberate that way.
It lessers with people who are not on the program committee writing, it's a list.
I know, we're talking about two different things, no, I, I think Kevin's implying that P C members
P C members deliberated, made a decision via email, without
They didn't make a decision. A decision is something that gets voted on, and, and, so they did not do that.
Right, but they, they deliberated, they deliberated.
They may have deliberated, but then they did not make a decision.
And you, and you, and when you're doing your deliberations, they have to be in an open meeting.
So, so we can say to them, you know, long conversation that we had our board meeting because of the programming committee, we want you to continue the work you're doing, but we ask that you refrain from doing any deliberation on email, that all discussions on programming, it happens in open meetings only.
In fact, I'd make it not asked, required that, yeah.
We must, yeah. And just, and put it out there, I mean, we're, we're learning one step at a time here too, we have things to do, but we have the time, man.
Right.
I mean, I, that, and that's, that's, that's the whole part and parcel here is, let's
Let's get our stuff right.
Yeah.
You know, let's get this, these policies in place.
And that's part two of my motion, if we ever get to it.
There you go, part two, part, we have to vote on part one.
We have to
Alright, part
Somebody needs to call a question, and I can't.
I was gonna say, are we done with part one yet?
Call, I'll call the question.
Okay, the motion is
On the floor.
Have been seconded, called, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
I'm kind of opposed, 'cause I don't think it's very clear.
Well, it doesn't pass, there's two opposed, so I'm sorry, we're moving on, is there another mo-
How does it not pass with two opposed?
No, I mean, it, it passes, you're not satisfied, so, I mean, you are the guy who brought it up, and you're not Sorry about that, but, okay.
Wait, who?
Wait, why don't we, do we, who's, is, was everyone in favor except Midge and myself?
Yeah.
You know, I'm abstaining.
I abstain.
That's not quite clear.
I'm not satisfied with this either.
Roll call, let's do a roll call.
Such a close thing.
Holy smokes.
Let's do a roll call, man.
Sonia.
No.
That's an objection, right?
Absent, no, no.
Okay.
Good night.
Pass?
Yes.
Midge, or, sorry, Tessa?
I'm okay with it.
Yes.
Midge?
No.
Barb?
Yes.
Midge? Yes.
Abstained.
Kurt?
No. Yes. No.
Me, I'm going to abstain.
So what do we got?
If it's a tie, I'm gonna just drive home and go to sleep.
One, two, three, four, five. Six in favor, four opposed, two abstentions.
Okay, so, well, um, then, maybe we need to table this, um, maybe this needs further discussion, maybe we just have to tell the
Well, wait, wait, it's six, it passed.
Out of twelve.
It passed.
It passed.
It passed at six? Six, four, and, and six against?
They have seven, no.
Six, four and four against. Six, six, and, let's, let's stop using the word four when four is also a number. Six in favor, four against.
Okay.
Two abstentions.
Cause the abstentions don't count.
And the abstentions don't count?
Wanna change your vote if you abstain?
Yeah, you're right, yeah. So six to four.
I, I think we have voted.
You know, I think that the group will clarify the language again in another Maybe, but it's done. I, I think we
Because this is something that's gonna come up again.
Yeah.
It's a process.
It's a pro, because we're in a process, and so, you know
But, but maybe when you, when this is communicated to them It's communicating, this vote should be computed, you know, they should, we should tell them that the vote was not at all
Can, can we try to ancillary motion and see if one that we can get more people on board?
No, 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 may I say something?
Yes.
It's really important for a board, once a vote is taken, to get behind the vote. If you disagree with the vote, try and overturn it at another board meeting, but if you have a board divided, you will have an organization divided. They need to know what they, what the board told them to do, and act on it. And then, if, if we decide to change it, that's fine, but i- if there's a board divided, there's gonna be an organization divided.
Part two of your motion is?
It What I was trying to go with all of that was the beginnings of the policy, and I think it includes things like, uh, you can't have email deliberations. You know, I mean, that's just wrong, you can't. Everything has to be in an open meeting. I mean, to me, that's, that's really the, if we're talking transparency, and I don't think that they did that out of the hiding, I think they probably didn't know any better.
I have the C P B's definition of a meeting here, and two-thirds of it makes sense to me, but a third doesn't, can I read it?
Which?
Um, okay, to meet the statutory definition of a meeting, one, a quorum for the purpose of taking action must be in attendance, okay, that's easy to judge. Two, deliver, deliberations must take place, that's easy. Three, the deliberations must determine or result in the joint conduct or disposition to the business of the particular body. I'm, I don't follow that.
I think it's related to the business.
The deliberations must determine or result in the joint The deliberations must determine or result in the joint conduct or disposition to the business of the particular body.
There has to be a result.
So, action.
And a result, yeah, what if we're gonna do it?
There has to be action, so if, if, if over email, if a quorum of people over email deliberate, but do not take action, it's not a meeting.
I mean.
Is that right?
Yeah.
You wanna vote on that, can we put that on the?
But it's still, but it's still a bad idea.
Yeah.
I don't think that's right.
Does it, does it talk about?
No, I don't think that's right.
Between?
This is from CPB dot O R G.
Well, I think we have to clarify.
Discussion isn't in a meeting?
What, uh, what can we ask?
A quorum must be in attendance, deliberations must take place, and this is the one that I don't quite get.
The deliberations must determine or result in the joint conduct or disposition to the business of the particular body.
I think what they're saying is that you can't hold people accountable for doing something bad if something bad happened. In other words, if you, if you reached a decision as a result of an email deliberation, and that is not permissible, then you violated something. If you didn't reach a decision, then there's no violation.
So, it's okay to discuss?
It's okay to discuss, I still think it's a terrible idea.
Yeah, I still think it's a terrible idea too.
Yeah.
But that's, the, the, the definition you're reading says that it, it has to be, there has to be a decision taken or else it's not a meeting.
Yeah, I, yeah. Right.
In the webinar, they discussed this, and.
What was the, and, what were you saying?
Nothing in that language uses the term decision, it's if what you discuss in that email interaction results in a decision based on what you discussed. Read it again, it's saying anything that you discuss.
Okay.
They use the phrases joint conduct or disposition, those are the two phrases they use, they don't say decision.
Disposition.
The deliberations must determine or result in the joint conduct or disposition to the business of the particular body. It, it's, it.
So, the disposition could be, I mean, you cable the motion, or you send it back to committee, that would, that's a disposition. It doesn't necessarily say you approve it or send it back for more study, but there was some decision that was made.
Something happened, it doesn't have to be a decision, I think the hand is, you're, I'll defer to the librarian, but, but no, I mean, no, but I mean,
No, I know, I, I mean, I mean, so, so they come up with a grid.
You deal with this, you deal with this.
They, they, they're emailing and they come up with a grid, well, then the grid comes to the meeting.
Why?
Yeah.
They've created a grid that came to the meeting on the basis of a meeting that had no public input.
Right.
Okay, I think that's what that is saying there, and they, they are very careful with their language. If they meant no action, it would say action, it does, or decision, they would put those words in, joint conduct.
Joint conduct.
In other words, we all agree that this is gonna be what we're going to bring to the meeting. That's the way I would interpret it, as I said, CPB is very careful with language, and it, they had the opportunity to say both decision and action, and they didn't. That indicates that they're not talking, from my perspective, they're not talking about a decision or action, they're talking about a deliberation that then impacts a decision or action.
I got two barons for Jay, I don't know what it sounds.
What town hall is the password, whatever they got here?
It just locked me up, I can't.
What's the password?
Town hall.
He said town hall.
No, cow.
A cow hall?
As in calicoon, cow hall.
C A, C A L hall.
Cow hall.
I'm guessing.
Okay, we, we need to sort of.
Move on or figure out how we're doing.
Could we try another motion that just might have a chance of more of us getting behind this, or we're not sending such a meeting?
I'm not so comfortable with another motion on this, but do other people, you, if you wanna make a motion, of course, you, you may.
I, I, I would like to, because I feel that, that, that the whole need was to try to show some sort of.
Confidence?
Unity to, or, yeah, that, 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 that process isn't broken, and I feel like we're sending a message that it is broken, if we send them a split, a split vote.
Can you read that, that, that? That doesn't sound like a broken message to me.
No, that's pretty clear.
No, I think.
I'm, I'm saying that a, a, a six, four, and two vote sounds like, there, there, there's, it sounds like there's, there's no agreement whatsoever.
Sounds broken.
Well, there is, there is majority, yeah.
Do we have to keep revisiting everything we're doing? I mean, could we like, maybe next time, we can think on it, and, okay, I mean, go.
Why don't you put it forward, and if someone seconds it, we'll go for it, yeah, go ahead, yeah.
The Board of Trustees confirms that the program committee is currently comprised, has the authority under current bylaws to receive public input, discuss programming changes, and make decisions to recommend to the station manager for action.
For consideration?
To make decisions, to sub, to propose to the, what'd you say to the program manager, what's that last sentence?
To recommend to the station manager for action.
Okay, so they can decide.
Manager period.
That's a right, station manager period.
Well, for action does put the onus on, says, you know, this is where, this is where this, the action comes from. You know, propose to the station manager, great, and then I sit and stroke my chin.
You know, I'm gonna second that motion, and then we can have discussion on it if we.
Okay, you better read it again exactly.
The Board of Trustee confirms that the program committee is currently comprised, has the authority under current bylaws to receive public input, discuss programming changes, and make decisions to recommend to the station manager for action.
Could you?
It strikes me as the same thing that Mike was trying to say, but I think it's.
It's better, I like it better, how do we get rid of mine?
I don't know.
And where, and where were you half an hour ago?
You were such a big hurry to get it passed, you were such a hurry to get it passed.
No, that was not a hurry. You haven't seen me in a hurry.
Then more discussion?
It will be weird to have.
So, the language, the language.
We can't have two, what do we do with the, anybody know Robert's rules, what do you do with the other one?
I don't know.
Yes, we can make a motion to retract it.
I make a motion to retract my previous motion that was voted on and approved.
I second that.
Do you want to just?
I need discussion on the motion to retract the original thing.
I don't know, I don't know what we're doing, making motions, unmaking motions, I mean, I'm not comfortable here, I mean, if.
So, I think what happened was that the first motion that got out.
Well, I, I'm not worried about what happened, I'm worried at what we have right now, because it's nine thirty, we are tired, I feel it is more muddled, I don't wanna offend anybody, but I feel some people are unsettled, and I feel like we could be here till midnight, and it's murky because it's murky, I think.
But I think this is making it a little clearer.
Less murky.
I think it's less murky.
I think the language is a lot clearer, and then that's what you were just uncomfortable with, not the concept, but the language that didn't, may not convey the concept, and I was thinking that because we're in this mercurial state anyway, as we move forward, we can make it better, because we're making everything better, and you just speeded up that process by re, rewording what Mike said.
So, can we have a vote on the motion to retract?
So, let's vote.
So, you have the motion on the floor to retract a, a, this motion.
Yes, okay, we have a motion on the floor made by.
By the.
You, Mike, to retract and seconded by Martin, and any discussion?
I.
We just had some.
We had some, and we call, how, in favor of the motion to attract, retract.
Detract, retract.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Also, everyone was saying, right?
Any, opposed, one, abstaining, okay, we retract that motion, and there is another motion on the floor.
For the second?
I will, I will now put this motion, well, it was, um, very, okay. So, I'll make it again, and if.
I'll be happy to second your motion.
No, we almost should type it on.
We were a little out of order, but, anyway.
Just read that.
Just read it again. The Board of Trustees confirms that the program committee is currently comprised, has the authority under current bylaws to receive public input, discuss programming changes, and make decisions to recommend to the station manager for action.
And I'll second it again.
Okay.
No further discussion.
Any further discussion?
Any discussion, we seconded, and we had discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, one, any abstentions? Okay, now, moving on.
May I make one more motion, it'll be quick and easy, don't worry, I, I'm.
Besides a jury.
I'm gonna make, I would like to make a motion that the thread of emails that were exchanged on the list serve be attached to these minutes as correspondence, as much of that was directed to the Board of Trustees, and I think would be appropriate to include that here.
Okay, that's a good idea.
I agree, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, let's just think what we have to do before we close, I think we have to decide that in January, on a certain day, we will have a training event where we can have, I'm proposing an open meeting to discuss the, the goal of the program, of programming at the station. I think we should do it in an open meeting, we can't do it at a retreat, we don't wanna deliberate, and then, we wanna do it, and we have to do it. I think it has to be a Sunday, we need more than an evening time, Saturday doesn't work for everybody, does Sunday work for everybody?
Depends on what Sunday.
Well. Okay, so then let's decide.
I talked to Ella from Hills, and so, she has those times, she has days available for us this winter, we just need to give her some advance notice. She can do one full day, she could do multiple days, like a couple of weeks in a row, you know, a Sunday, a Sunday, or a Sunday in January, a Sunday in February. So, I, I have that information, and her prices are very reasonable. I also got prices from Frost Valley for us to go and stay overnight. I think they're a little out of our budget, they include all the meals, she said you can bring your families along for winter recreation, which would be fun. But the cost would be, for one night, in the two days, a hundred and seventy-seven dollars a person, we could underwrite some of it, but I don't think the, and I, I was figuring for forty people.
One night, two days, all meals?
Yeah.
For one seventy-seven each?
Right.
Okay.
So, that's not too bad. The Villa Roma, the same thing, two days, one night, yes.
Is this for some kind of retreat?
It's for a training, it's a training available to volunteers, C A B, P C, anybody that wants to come, okay? 'Cause we talked about that, you told me that already, I, I absorbed that, I did, Kevin, Shante, Shante, Shante.
What, what if we tried a smaller bite at this to begin with?
Well, this Sunday works into my yoga, you know, so.
Kevin, it was beautiful what you wrote about.
Really, really, really.
It really was.
Would, would it fit if we tried a one day longer meeting and see if that were, and then think about, a bigger picture?
And then a bigger picture.
This would be an open meeting, and we would do it at Hills.
Yes.
And it would be on a Sunday, and we're talking about the fifth, the twelfth, or the nineteenth.
January?
Yes, we're doing this in January, we have to do this program thing now, people, this is.
And that would be the topic of discussion?
Yes, that is the topic, and, and.
Program, goals.
To discuss program goals.
And policy.
And proposing, and then how to have a nice time or something.
So, you said the date?
When, when is the January full, full board meeting?
The dates. That, the board meeting is on the fifteenth.
And the executive to work out the staff.
The ninth.
Do we wanna do it in between, or after?
The fifth or the twelfth, it should be. The fifth or the twelfth. How many people can make the fifth? Probably.
I like the twelfth, 'cause I'll still probably be hungover by the fifth.
Okay.
Can you make the twelfth?
Well, maybe not for his consideration after.
Well, let's, let me, the final decision.
Okay, what, we'd start in the middle of the day, and maybe just go for four hours, like, start with a little lunch or something?
Just like a regular.
Oh, sure.
I think I'd rather start at nine.
You should start sooner than that.
We could start at nine in the morning, we could be there for dinner.
Nine in the morning. Yeah. Let me check with Ella, and I'll get out if that's available, I'll get right back.
Fifteenth is a, wait.
All right. It's gonna be on the twelfth.
Yeah, the twelfth is on the, the fifteenth is the meeting.
If we can, and we'll do the best we can on.
In what time?
All attending, we'll have to let you know.
I'll, I'll, nine a.m.
And it will be, we'll make a promo, we'll put it on the web, and we'll make an on-air promo that we're having this meeting, and it's open, people can come.
Well, tell, did you say in the morning?
I just ask a question, because I think Pat's gonna need to answer, we know how many of us are gonna show up, more or less. Is there a place at Hills that can accommodate fifty more people if they choose to show up?
Yeah, you can fit a hundred people in the dining room.
Okay.
She said if we were gonna stay there, we talked about an overnight kind of a thing, that she could, she doesn't have room for all of us, we could bunk together, but it would be kinda cozy, 'cause there's only ten rooms.
Wait.
Yes?
Are we going to start with a blank piece of paper, or is someone gonna be charged to do some pre-work for this?
I think we need to have some pre-work.
Pre-work, I think someone should come up with a couple of things, like Kurt, and.
Right, answer.
I'm gonna get the, the gentleman that I spoke to at the CPB is gonna send me the, the document that they created, his radio station. That's something.
You should also look through all our papers and see if we have any.
Definitely.
Was there anything of value that came out of our August thing? Yeah, if you get that.
Can I, can.
There's also, I think we could reach out to Helen Budrock, who's a planner who does a lot of this facilitation of discussions and setting goals and objectives for things, and ask her if she would like to be the facilitator, so it's not one of us, so that we are all part of the group, and we have someone there kind of guiding the conversation, yes, no?
You know, I got some experience with that, we did an appreciative inquiry at the college last January, and we brought in consultants, outside facilitators, best decision we ever made, they were very good at, at keeping us in line, and keeping the discussion moving, and they have no stake in the game.
Yeah.
So, they, they, they don't, they're not gonna try and hush somebody up or advance someone else's opinion, their, their job is to make sure that the discussion occurs, so I, for what it's worth, that was our experience, it worked great.
Okay, could, could, would the board agree that we would let Pat and Mike think about a facilitator and arrange this, a sort of an agenda for the day, and we could move on from here? Someone, a, a third party that could sort of move us forward.
But their, their job is not content, their job is process.
But we, no, but we are, we're not doing a strategic plan, we're just doing program, we're fo, we're, we're just focusing on the program.
A piece of a strategic.
Right? Okay, just quickly to, before we adjourn, the one thing we didn't, yes.
I did have something to bring up, if we're about to adjourn, from that meeting with the NFCB, there's something we have to make sure we have posted by twelve thirty-one. I, I wrote it up, that was what, the thing I was gonna bring up, so I can give it to Adam, just so he makes sure you have all the.
Yeah, let me see, possibly we already have it posted.
And I don't know, what, some of these things were from the SAS, and I don't know if they apply to us.
Okay.
Um, but if you looked at, oh, that's just in the glass, look at B, all that's been posted by twelve thirty-one, we have until nine thirty fourteen for everything else. And at some point, I do need to get a little more input on, on directions, 'cause the C A B is asking for us to give them more focused past, but I think,
Can I pen somebody?
I think we're a little, I can't deal with that tonight, but that other thing does have to be addressed by the, uh, thirty-first, I think is the deadline.
Okay.
And if you want these, you can have, and these were the two things I wanted to bring up, so.
If we, if we're thinking about adjourning, could we at least go back to the agenda and see if there's anything critical to be.
Yes, we're, we're not thinking about adjourning just yet, the agenda had on it of the, you did the tower, new, new business.
We haven't got to that yet.
We have time for comments from the public before we adjourn, we're gonna do that, but I wanna just review some of the loose ends, the going back of the archives to see what our policies are, who is doing that, I didn't kind of get that, who, who is going to see that that happens? Because that should happen before the meeting in Ju, in January, no?
And you said that you have a file there.
I have a file.
Do we have?
And you, or have somebody?
I, I'd be willing to go in sometime, anybody wanna come in and?
I'll, I'll help, I'll, I'll take a look through some of that as well.
Okay, so the two of us would at least start with, and we, we, the custom of the old board was to write an annual report and put on the, you know, share, so, we've gotta, maybe I'll start that with Adam, some figures and data, and pass something around, just to, we have to design something that would be where we've come. The volunteer election rules have to be addressed and presented before long, because the election would be in like May and June, and I think Adam had some ideas about that, and the bylaws people maybe should put that high up on the list, because people have to be informed about.
So, Midge, can I send you just a rough draft of what I might think would be a good way to approach that, and you, you all kick it around?
Barbara's gonna finish up on the finances and fundraising, and then comments from the public, and then we'll adjourn after that, okay? Barbara?
Can you just flip the report up, Joel? Just to keep this really short, because the, the report was sent out to you in advance of the meeting, so hopefully you've had a chance to read it. so hopefully you've had a chance to read it. Um, the, the, um, the thing that I'd just like to bring up is the, and if you scroll down a little bit, basically, two things. Um, the, um, the winter friend raiser that we had talked about, I've gotten some suggestions of names from Sonia and from Tessa, I haven't gotten any from anybody else. Um, is anyone planning on getting me any additional names, or...
I'll get you some, yeah.
Okay, so, please do that as soon as possible, and just by a show of hands, who would be interested in participating in these conversations with some of these folks about the questions that I talked about at the last meeting? Um, what can we do to increase listenership, what can we do to increase membership? What collaboration opportunities do you see? And, you know, how do you think, um, what trends do you think, uh, you know, are occurring in the area that, you know, you think we ought to be paying attention to?
I would be interested in...
Anybody besides Joel?
To talk to you about the fundraiser?
To talk to, to talk to some of these folks in the neighborhood about, you know, what they think about those, those matters.
Yeah, are you suggesting, like, individuals, or in a group?
Well, I'm thinking that it's like, you know, the person we wanna talk to, and then maybe two of us, you know?
Yeah.
Split up the list that way.
I think we should, if we're gonna do that, put together, um, some talking points that we all review in advance, so that we're, you know, we know what we're, what we're talking about and saying.
But I just wanna see what, what folks, sorry, are, you know, are interested in, in participating in this.
Sure.
Um, then the other thing, um, the board questionnaire, I have gotten answers back from everyone, and I sent you a report, um, my interpretation, um...
Very good, that was good.
An interesting profile.
It is an interesting profile.
Yeah, very interesting, that was good.
Um, and, you know, I think that that kind of also needs to be something that we bear in mind as we, you know, kind of go through some of the struggles that we've had tonight. Um, if we are looking to either replace some of us, because some of our terms will be up very shortly, um, or expand the board, I think that there are some important, um, uh, needs in terms of subject matter expertise that, you know, identified. Um, and I think also, as we're looking at training, um, those topics, um, you know, about what our regulatory responsibilities are, and what the responsibilities are in terms of, you know, boards managing nonprofits, um, you know, are obviously very high on the list. So, that's all I wanted to bring up tonight.
Yeah, it's amazing how much work everyone here is doing. I, I mean, I do really appreciate it. Don't, I mean, it's, I, I was on the old board, it was never like this. Okay, if we can, anything else, though? Comments from the two Pe- peanut?